Good evening, Cerritos residents, and the members of our community and the friends of Cerritos. I would like to call to order the Thursday, September 25, 2025, 7 o'clock PM, City Council Successor Agency Regular and City Council Special Meeting. Please be advised, the business item listed on tonight's special meeting agenda, new and old business item 9A related to Measure A funding, will be considered after the conclusion of new and old business item 9A listed on the regular meeting agenda. The invocation will be given by our good friend, Pastor Dustin Parker of Concordia Lutheran Church, and the pledge will be led by Troop 394. Please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance, Pastor Dustin Parker.
If you are willing, please pray with me. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Lord, we gather here tonight, and I ask you to bless this meeting. I ask you to bless our city council with a sense of service, a sense of humility, open ears, and willingness to do what is good. Lord, protect our sheriff's department and our fire department as they serve. Lord, bless all of the servants in our community, both those that work for the city and those that volunteer. Lord, help us, our city, to continue to grow, to be a safe place, where families are encouraged and grow, where the old are valued, where those who are challenged either by illness or by family or finances can know peace. Lord bless this meeting, I pray. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen.
Amen.
Color guard attention. Color guard forward march. Color guard prepare your posted colors. Please join in with me, the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, will liberate and justice for all. Color guard posted colors. Color guard regroup. Color guard retreat. Audience, at ease.
Troop 394, if you could just stick around for a little bit. Random city clerk, will you please conduct a roll call?
Council and agency member, home.
Present.
Council and agency member, Polito.
Present.
Council and agency member, Say.
Present.
Mayor Protem and Vice Chair Johnson.
Present.
Mayor and Chair Yokoyama.
Here. Thank you to Pastor Dustin Parker of Concordia Lutheran Church and to Troop 394. If you'll please join us over here so we can take a group photo. City Council colleagues, will you please join me? Pastor. Pastor, step up, step up into this, fill this spot. Come on, pastor. First we'll go here, first we'll look here. Any of you want to come around, come down, hurry up. Come on in. Come on down.
Five for the city. Go. One, two, one, two, three, four, and five.
Okay, let's look here.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
The next item is 5A presentations. Cerito City Council Meeting Presentations. Business Spotlight. Albano's Plumbing, Inc. Is it Ben? Ben, come on up. Thank you, Ben. I told him I'm putting him under the business spotlight. Since 1978, Albano's Plumbing, Albano's Plumbing has prided itself in offering a full spectrum of plumbing services designed to meet the unique needs of each customer. From minor leaks to major repairs, the company's team of skilled professionals approaches each job with the same level of care and expertise. The company takes pride in ensuring each staff member is trained in technical expertise as well as integrity, hard work, and excellent customer service. Albano's Plumbing is celebrating 47 years of conducting business in the city of Cerritos. From humble beginnings to now serving the entire Gateway City's region with expansive plumbing services, Albano's Plumbing has grown to become an integral service provider in the community, especially City of Cerritos. And Albano's Plumbing is located at 20014 State Road here in Cerritos, and you can look them up at their website, So Ben, I'm honored to present you from the city of Cerritos and the Cerrito City Council with this proclamation celebrating your recognition of the Business Spotlight to Albano's Plumbing, Inc. Okay, let's take a photo. Ben, could you please tell us about you and Albano's Plumbing?
Thank you to the city and the council for this recognition. Albano's Plumbing is a family-run business here in Cerritos, like the mayor was saying, for 47 years now. It's a pleasure to be a part of the city of Cerritos, to service the residents of Cerritos, and not only work in Cerritos, but I raised my family in Cerritos, and my children go to Mary Bragg Elementary School in the ABC School District. And the city of Cerritos has just been, you know, awesome to our family, not only business-wise, but personally. If you have any plumbing needs, if you're in the area, please give us a try. We love to service your properties. And yeah, thank you to everybody for this opportunity and for the recognition. Thank you.
Thank you. So who's here with you today?
Today I have my lovely daughter Ava, my awesome son Ethan, and my beautiful wife, Oi.
Would you like to join us in the Cerrito City Council for a group photo? It's up to you guys. City Council colleagues, can we take a group photo with Albano's Plumbing, Inc. for the Business Spotlight? Can you hand him the proclamation?
All right, I'm gonna take five photos, ready. One, two, one, two, three, four, one more, and five.
Ava, congratulations. All right. All right. 100th birthday. Shirley, can you please come, come up? Shirley Garcia's 100th birthday. The city of Cerritos and the Cerrito City Council would like to extend its warmest congratulations. You're welcome. And heartfelt wishes to Mrs. Shirley Garcia on the occasion of her 100th birthday. Born on September 6, 1925, in Watts, California. Mrs. Garcia has been a Cerritos resident since 1969. Mrs. Garcia raised her three children, Michael, right over here, and Yolanda, and Anne, in Cerritos, and is now blessed with four grandchildren and several great-grandchildren. Ms. Garcia worked at Save On Drugstore, where she retired after 40 years of service. She is currently a member of the Concordia Lutheran Church, where she participates in many social activities. I'm happy to hear that. The Cerrito City Council is pleased to celebrate this special day and wishes Mrs. Shirley Garcia continued health, happiness, and many more years of joy. Happy birthday. I'm gonna give the mic to Shirley and Michael.
Well, I want to thank Mayor Yokoyama, Kathy Matsumoto, and Jesse Saval for making this possible, for this contribution. And I'm very honored that they paid giving my mother this recognition for her 100th birthday. And I also thank our pastor.
Pastor Dustin.
Dustin Parker. For coming, and also Chelsea. She's also here. She's the president of the Senior Center, Pat Nixon Park, along with Desiree, who works there. And I also am happy that Sandra and other people and Dane have come here to support her.
Thank you very much.
She said, "Thank you very much." So Shirley, this is from the city of Cerritos and the Cerrito City Council. It's a proclamation that we are tonight celebrating with you your 100th birthday. Thank you so much for coming out tonight and celebrating with us. We all love you and cherish you being such a longtime Cerritos resident. Thank you. City Council colleagues, would you please come up? And if we could please take a photo with Shirley and Michael. And Michael, please invite up your family and friends that you would like to join us in the group photo.
This is what she feels like, a young girl.
I'm right here. Yes, please.
Five photos, ready. One, two, one, two, three, four, one more, and five.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you all again.
Thank you. It's good to see you again.
National Hispanic Heritage Month. The city of Cerritos is proud to join communities across the nation in observing Hispanic Heritage Month, celebrated annually from September 15 to October 15. This month offers an opportunity to honor the rich heritage, history, and enduring contributions of Hispanic and Latino communities in the United States, including right here in the city of Cerritos. The city is honored to recognize the invaluable impact the Hispanic community and Latino community continues to have in shaping our city. Their contributions help enrich our cultural landscape and foster a vibrant, inclusive environment that benefits all residents, including here in our diverse city of Cerritos. So if I can please call up the officers of the Association of Latino Professionals for America. The Cerrito City Council is proud to recognize the Association of Latino Professionals for America, ALFA. In honor of National Hispanic Heritage Month, ALFA was created in 1972 and has been dedicated to inspiring and empowering future leaders in every sector of the global economy. By providing members with workshops, networking opportunities, career resources, and a chance to develop leadership skills, ALFA Cerritos College is helping to inspire the next generation of leaders. So we have with us here today representing ALFA Cerritos College Chapter. We have... You can give them their certificates. We have President Anna Sofia Sanchez Rodriguez. Vice President Giovanni Guardado. Giovanni Guardado. Treasurer Jose Antonio Aguilar. Secretary Vladimir Ramirez. Where is the advisor, Charlie Osaki? And we have a proclamation from the city of Cerritos celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month, and I'm gonna hand this to the immediate past president, Daniel Polito. So President Anna Sofia Sanchez Rodriguez, could you or one of your officers please tell us about ALFA Cerritos College?
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for presenting us here. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity. We are ALFA at Cerritos College. We're a whole association, and then I'm proud to say that Cerritos College is one of the fewest colleges here in whole California that actually have this association. So we definitely have a huge opportunity, and we're gonna make sure to do a great impact in our school and also in the city. So thank you so much for this recognition. And also, yeah, I don't know if you want to say something else?
Yeah, so at ALFA, we give students the opportunities that, for years, usually have the opportunity to talk to professionals, hear their stories, hear their journeys. And this not only helps them in their professional careers, but also allows them to gain these skills that they need in order to be successful in a professional career. And this is, we're so honored to be able to be inspiring new leaders. And this is, we're so honored to be able to be inspiring new leaders and inspiring students, and hopefully also encouraging them to transfer to four years and dream big.
Thank you, Giovanni. And I'm actually gonna have immediate past president, Daniel Palito, also hold this certificate, recognizing Association of Latino Professionals for America, from our state Senator Tony Strickland. So Cerritos, Cerritos City Council colleagues, if you could please come up and join us in a group photo? Thanks, brother. Thank you, brother. Keep in touch.
Thank you for the good work you guys did.
Can I please, can I please have Immigrant Student Alliance officers, please come up? And the advisor. Is the advisor here? Immigrant Student Alliance. The Cerritos City Council is proud to recognize the Immigrant Student Alliance, ISA. The Immigrant Student Alliance Club at Cerritos College in honor of National Hispanic Heritage Month. ISA is empowering students through education, bringing awareness and guiding the campus in order to achieve equality in higher education. The ISA are students who are impacted by immigration and could be undocumented Cerritos College students, but are working towards creating and advocating for policy change for future generations. Congratulations for celebrating National Hispanic Heritage Month with us, Immigrant Student Alliance. And we have with us here today President Alba Amador Camacho, Vice President Jasmine Jun. Jasmine Jun. Vice President Jasmine Jun. Treasurer Nubia Martinez. Secretary Juliana Torres. Historian Fernanda Estrada Borban. And they're here with their advisor, Yvette Romo Diaz. Yvette Romo Diaz. So, Madam President, Alba Amador Camacho, would you like to say, could you please tell us about Immigrant Student Alliance, Cerritos College Chapter?
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having us here. It's a great big pleasure being here surrounded by all of you. I'm gonna have our vice president kind of tell you a little bit about us. So as mentioned earlier, the Immigrant Student Alliance focuses on empowering and supporting undocumented students, but also students who are in mixed-status families. As you may already know, it's a very tumultuous time. And I think it's really important that the ISA focuses on hosting workshops, educating not only students who are undocumented or in mixed-status families, but also faculty or students who are interested in supporting the immigrant community. And we host social events as well as provide any financial support or even free legal consultations. And so the ISA is really grateful that we're being recognized here today. And we hope that we can continue these efforts for the remainder of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. So thank you, Immigrant Student Alliance, Cerritos College, for celebrating National Hispanic Heritage Month with us here at our Cerritos City Council meeting. Council colleagues, could we please take a group photo with Immigrant Student Alliance? So it's great to see these young leaders, these young leaders representing National Hispanic Heritage Month and the diversity of our city of Cerritos. And they came, they are students and they came here from Cerritos College. And we have our proclamation celebrating and recognizing National Hispanic Heritage Month here in the city of Cerritos. On this date, recognizing that National Hispanic Heritage Month is September 15 to October 15. And to, I'd be honored to present this proclamation to the Director of the Office of the President, Government Relations, Trustee Services, and Strategic Initiatives, Andrea Whitig. Phil? Andrea, could you please tell us about Cerritos College and National Hispanic Heritage Month?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'd like to thank the Cerritos City Council for recognizing Cerritos College, located here as a member of your community in the city of Cerritos. We're a Hispanic-serving institution. And we've had a lot of activities throughout the month to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. We were recently also awarded a national award for serving Hispanic students. And I'd also like to thank my colleagues who are here with me today. We have Dr. Amber Rock, who is our dean for institutional research, and the Director of Public Relations, Chelsea Van Dornum, for being here today. And as always, we appreciate, sincerely appreciate the support from the city of Cerritos and your active participation in our many events that we have for the community. Thank you.
City Council colleagues, could you please come up for a group photo? And Amber and Chelsea, can you please join us up here?
All right, quick photos. Ready, one, two, one, two, three, four, and five.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us.
The city of Cerritos is honored to recognize September as Service Club Month, a time to celebrate and acknowledge the vital contributions of service clubs to our city and surrounding communities. These organizations play a key role in strengthening our community through charitable work, fundraising initiatives, and a wide range of volunteer service efforts. Service clubs provide essential resources and support to individuals and families in need, while also fostering a spirit of civic engagement and compassion. Beyond their philanthropic impact, these clubs offer valuable opportunities for leadership development, mentorship, and scholarships for young people. They also serve as a platform for individuals of all ages to connect, collaborate, and make meaningful contributions to the greater good. The city of Cerritos extends its appreciation to all local service clubs for their ongoing dedication to enhancing the quality of life for residents and building a stronger, more connected community. Today, we have one of those very important, vital service clubs. If the president of the Cerritos Artesia Rotary Club can please come up? Hi, Dan. Cerritos Artesia Rotary Club. The city of Cerritos and the Cerritos City Council is pleased to recognize the Cerritos Artesia Rotary Club in honor of Service Club Month. The mission of Rotary International is to provide service to others, promote integrity, and advance world understanding, goodwill, and peace through fellowship of business, professional, and community leaders. Through their contributions to the community with their fundraising efforts and mentorship of the next generation, the Cerritos Artesia Rotary Club is one of the many local service clubs who are helping to build a stronger Cerritos. And we have with us here today the president of the Cerritos Artesia Rotary Club to receive this proclamation from the city of Cerritos in honor of Service Club Month. Thank you, Dan, for coming. And this is the proclamation that we're presenting to you. But I'm gonna let you say a few words about the Cerritos Artesia Rotary Club.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council, for recognizing the important work that service clubs do during Service Club Month. I want to just take this opportunity to announce on October 19, the Cerritos Artesia Rotary Club is hosting our biggest fundraiser event. For just $60, you can enjoy an all-you-can-eat shrimp boil, which includes beer wine and pulled pork sliders, as well as dessert. That will be at the Artesia DES Portuguese Hall at 2:00 PM, which is Sunday, October 19. We'd love to see the whole community out. And the funds raised go directly back into the community, doing all the work that Mayor mentioned. Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Dan Rocha. Council colleagues, will you join me for a group photo?
Thank you. Good seeing you.
Good job, Dan.
Five photos. Ready, one, two, one, two, three, four, and five.
Congratulations. Yes, thank you for coming.
Hey, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. Thanks for...
Next, I'd like to have a special presentation. If I could please turn, please have the city manager share with us. Please, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council. One of the presentations this evening was Business Spotlight, which is one of our many economic development efforts to attract and retain businesses in Cerritos. We, in addition to that, the city council adopted strategic plan includes goals related to enhanced communications and also strengthening economic development. As part of that effort, I'm proud this evening to showcase a video that was prepared by our staff. It's a, it's a social media video reel that features a recent celebration of one of the city's economic development efforts. That's a ribbon cutting celebrating the grand opening of Chubby Cattle, a restaurant that recently opened in Cerritos in Plaza 183. The video features our city council and members of our community development team who were instrumental in bringing that business to the city and facilitating its grand opening. And I'm thankful for the hard work of our communications and marketing team who put this video together. So with that, I'm gonna ask our staff to roll the video.
Thank you, Robert. 5B statewide special election presentation. City manager, do we have a report on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. For this item, I'm gonna defer to City Clerk Sininava to introduce our guest speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. This evening, we are pleased to welcome Mr. Adrian Avalar from the Los Angeles County Registrar/Recorder County Clerk's Policy and Program Compliance Division. Mr. Avalar will provide a brief presentation on the county's administration of the recently called November 4, 2025 statewide special election. And at this time, I will turn the floor to Mr. Avalar.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Adrian Avalar from the Los Angeles County Registrar/Recorder County Clerk's Office. It is my pleasure to provide you with an overview of the upcoming statewide special election. Next slide, please. So California called for a statewide special election that's scheduled for November 4, 2025. This is a special election for voters to decide on State Proposition 50, which is a constitutional amendment that would allow temporary changes to California's congressional voting district, congressional district boundaries through 2030. If passed, the U.S. House of Representatives districts for, for some voters will change beginning in 2026. It is important for local jurisdictions to know that this election is being paid for by the state of California, as was in SB 280, which was the bill that actually called for this election. Next slide. So this election is being called in one of the shortest timeframes that I've ever seen before. The bill was signed on August 21, which means we had 75 days to put on this election. I'm pleased to report our efforts and our preparations have been going very well in terms of vote centers, drop boxes, election workers. I do want to highlight some key... an official vote-by-mail ballot. Voters have multiple options for returning this ballot. They can use a postage-paid return envelope that's provided to them. They can also return it at one of our many ballot drop boxes located throughout the county. And they can also go to a vote center to drop it off. We actually have a drop box here at the Cerritos Civic Center Plaza. There are going to be 418 ballot drop boxes available for the election. The vast majority of those open and available 24 hours a day. For in-person voting, voters can go to any one of our vote centers. There's going to be 251 locations across the county for this election. 111 locations will open that first Saturday, October 25th, and an additional 140 will open on Saturday, November 1st. At vote centers, our voters can come vote. They can take advantage of conditional voter registration. They can receive services in their preferred languages as well. Next slide, please. So next, I'll go over more locally the voting options for the residents of Cerritos. So this is a screenshot of our Vote Center Locator Tool that's on our website. Voters can use this to find the closest locations to them. And we're going to be sending a postcard to all registered voters with the nearest locations to their home. That mailing is going to happen on October 23rd. For this election, the nearest vote centers are the Artesia Library, Huerta Elementary School, and Cerritos College. Next slide, please. Next, this is a view of our ballot drop box locator tool, and this will show you the locations available nearby for voters to drop off their ballot. For this election, the nearest ballot drop boxes are located at the Cerritos Civic Center Plaza, so just outside of here, Cerritos Park East, Artesia Library, Alondra Library, and Cerritos College. The majority of these boxes stay in place year-round through long-term agreements with our partners. I want to thank the City of Cerritos for their continued partnership in this program. They were actually one of the first ballot drop boxes we installed, so thank you for that. Vote-by-mail continues to be the most popular method of voting, and we receive more ballots through our ballot drop box than any other method. For example, for the 2024 general election, approximately 82% of Cerritos residents voted by mail. Next slide, please.
What was that percentage?
So next, I want to talk about a topic that's been brought to our attention through the City Clerk's Office, so thank you for that. We've been made aware of an upcoming street name change in the City of Cerritos, effective October 1st. Squaw Valley Way will be changing to Sun Valley Way. This change will impact 27 residential properties in the city, and we have identified 50 active registered voters that would fall into this category. We want to address any potential concerns that this street name change might impact their ability to vote. So vote-by-mail ballots are already in production, and they're going to be sent to the original address. That said, we believe the USPS has a plan for ensuring that those get delivered correctly. In addition, we have a way of monitoring and ensuring that all ballots get mailed, so we're going to take extra precautions to check and ensure that those are delivered timely. Next, when it comes to in-person voting, when a voter goes to the vote center, they're going to be registered at the original address. At that time, they can do a very easy voter update to their address, and that'll be in effect for all future elections. For anyone who wants to get prepared or kind of get ahead of it, once the street name change goes into effect, they can go to our website, lavote.gov, update their voter registration there as well. We don't anticipate any kind of negative impacts on voters, but we're going to take extra steps to, again, monitor the mailing and make sure that those ballots arrive on time, and then also be prepared to help anyone with any voter registration issues or questions. Okay, so that concludes, if you go to the next slide, that concludes my presentation for today. I am available to answer any questions that you might have about this upcoming election.
Thank you for the report. Do we have any questions from the council? I have a question. You said that October 28th is the last day to request a vote-by-mail ballot, but you also told us that all registered voters in Los Angeles County will receive a vote-by-mail ballot. So what is the significance of this October 28th deadline, last day to request a vote-by-mail ballot, if all voters are already going to receive one?
Yeah, so all voters will receive it. We do get supplemental requests. This could be for a replacement ballot, for example. Let's say anyone's ballot wasn't delivered for whatever reason, could be any number of issues that could contribute to that. Maybe they lost or misplaced it. We also get some voters who mark it ahead of time, maybe make a mistake, need a replacement, so that would be the last day to request a replacement.
Thank you.
And for us to mail it in time.
Thank you. What's your name again?
My name is Adrian Avalar.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Avalar. Thank you. If you could stick around, because I'm going to open it up for public comment, okay?
Got it. Thank you.
I will now open for public comment on this item. David Powellman.
So if you care about the last screen, I don't have any further questions.
That's what you wanted to know, huh? You live there. Thank you. Thank you for answering Mr. Powellman's questions, Mr. Avalar. Are there any other speakers on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Thank you, Mr. Avalar, and the Los Angeles County Register Recorder County Clerk for joining us this evening and for sharing this information with our community and with the residents of Cerritos. Moving on to Item 5C, Mayor's Annual Appointments. And we're going to postpone that to the next meeting. Thank you for your attendance at tonight's meeting. State law and our local rules do not support the use of profanity, hateful speech, or activity that disrupts the conduct of this city business meeting. If necessary, I will issue an initial warning and call for a recess to restore order. After that, the chamber may be cleared if disruption continues. The following comments pertain to all public comment periods on tonight's agenda. I will open public comments at the appropriate time on the agenda. Please be prepared to approach the podium and begin your comments at the time you are called. Public comments should be directed to the City Council and made only from the podium during your turn. Please respect each speaker and refrain from any disruptive behavior or speech during their comment time. Public comments will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Agenda Item 6, public comments should be limited to items on the consent calendar, closed session, and items not listed on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. Prior to tonight's meeting, the City Council received full text, unredacted copies of the five written comments submitted by the deadline for Item 6. This is inclusive of one comment for Item 5A. Requests for copies of written comments can be made to the Office of the City Clerk during regular business hours. I will now open for Item 6, Public Comments, Benjamin Au.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. My name is Benjamin Au, and I'm a retired computer scientist and longtime resident of Cerritos. When I was sworn in as a Planning Commissioner of the City of Cerritos a few months ago, I took an oath of office. And after that, having witnessed many of my fellow commissioners and committee members and even City Council members taking their oath of office, and tonight I would like to share with you and bring your attention to an issue I have with the oath of office in the City of Cerritos. U.S. Code 3331 stipulates the following about the oath of office, and I quote, "An individual, except the president elected or appointed to an office of honor or profit in the civil service or uniformed services, shall take the following oath." Quote, "I," first name, last name, "do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties of the office on which I am about to enter. So help me God." End quote. The oath of office I took and our fellow commissioners and committee members and City Council members took was word-for-word identical to the one that's stipulated in U.S. Code 3331, except the closing phrase, "So help me God," was omitted. The Federal Judiciary Act passed in 1789 by the First U.S. Congress states that, quote, "Which words, 'so help me God,' shall be omitted in all cases where an affirmation is omitted instead of an oath." In other words, if the phrase "so help me God" is omitted, then it is an affirmation of office, not an oath of office. Today, millions of elected or appointed officials nationwide take an oath of office at the beginning of their public service. It seems that in most cases, they use the version stipulated in U.S. Code 3331, which includes the closing phrase, "So help me God." My question is, when and for what reason the City of Cerritos decided to omit that phrase? Although it's not illegal to omit that phrase, doing so renders an oath of office into an affirmation of office, according to the Federal Judiciary Act of 1789. It also reflects the values and moral standards of our city. More importantly, it creates a glaring inconsistency. For if that phrase was omitted to ensure the separation of church and state and to avoid offending people who don't believe in God, then what about the invocation we administer at the beginning of each City Council meeting? And what about the phrase "one nation under God" in our pledge of allegiance? Do we want to cancel those as well? So I conclude my comment with a humble request. For the love of God and for consistency in our city's official business, can we please put the phrase "so help me God" back into the oath of office for our city government? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Au. City Manager, City Attorney, City Clerk, can you please report back to the council about Mr. Au's public comment?
I could do that now.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, such a pleasure in meeting you today, tonight. I recall so well, I believe the mayor commented at the State of the City address a couple of months ago, commenting about for the residents to suggest ideas that will help the city to generate revenue. And then ever since then, I've been kind of working on it myself and thinking about it, because I've been a resident of the City of Cerritos for quite a number of years, okay, since my parents bought the house and all that. And then I started thinking that the city created so many more pickleball courts, especially at Liberty Park. So being a double bruiser of UCLA, and I decided to work on my alma mater, UCLA. So I'm very happy to report to the city that I have discussed with the Anderson School of Management of UCLA. And then I suggested, because they are now creating what's called sport club or club sport. And then UCLA has already started with the undergraduate students, but now what about for the graduate students? And I'm so happy to say we're discussing it. And then the question is, where can we have these events? And I suggested Cerritos. Why Cerritos? Because Cerritos is located right at the border between Orange County and Los Angeles County, and is supported by quite a few, you know, alums and students. So I'd like to request the City of Cerritos to allow the Liberty Park pickleball courts can be used for events for pickleball-related, okay? And then not only that can generate revenue for the city, why? Because it's surrounded by the Cerritos Auto Mall and the Cerritos Shopping Mall and then all of that. And then because the City of Cerritos already has the tennis courts, I recall so well that most likely every once or at least once every couple of months, there will be an event occupying the tennis courts for nearly, you know, three or four hours on a Saturday. And I'd say, gee, that would be a good idea to extend for the pickleball courts. And then at UCLA, so far, the Westwood campus is extremely small without having, and I have attended a couple of recent events occupying in the City of Santa Monica. And I say, gosh, those courts are no comparison to what City of Cerritos has. So why not at Cerritos? So in any case, I had a discussion with the Anderson School staff about it, and they even say, well, if you can work on it, that would be great. So the way I look at it is that it's the fastest-growing sport. And secondly, is that the pickleball courts created for the City of Cerritos, and I have even suggested to the City Council, I'd say, gee, that can be a source for generating revenue. So I definitely see this as a possibility, and it's very, very workable. And then not only Liberty Park is ideally suited, because a lot of the alumnis, they will be coming and bring some of their family members and then their kids. You've got playground for the kids, and there are plenty of parking spaces. And then when they're done, they can easily just walk over to the Cerritos Mall, and then the restaurants are all there. And if they're looking into buying a new car, one block away in the Cerritos Auto Square. So and then also another advantage is that the fact it's so close to the freeway, they don't have to drive for miles and miles, and then you attract... And then you attract all of the UCLA students from Orange County, LA County. And then now UCLA is the number one public university in the country. And then not only that, it's the most applied to university in the world now. So it's going to definitely bring a tremendous amount of recognition for the city of Cerritos, and it can generate the revenue for the city of Cerritos. And I'm happy for it, because I'm very proud of the city of Cerritos, and I want the city of Cerritos to expand in that direction. So summarizing what I'm requesting, hopefully the City Council will give this a favorable consideration, and I will continue to work with my alma mater, UCLA, and I will work on that. And then hopefully UCLA will consider Cerritos to be a prime location for the fastest going sport of pickleball. Thank you so much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, Teddy. Thank you, Teddy. We'll set up a meeting, okay? City Attorney, are you ready to give a report on the previous public comment and update the council?
Yes, the comment that I'm addressing is the one made by previous speaker Benjamin Au related to United States Code Section 33 and federal oath of office. There's a distinction for the federal government and the state government and political subdivisions of the state. And although Mr. Au is correct with respect to oaths of office related to federal workers, federal employees, and the federal government, we as city employees and city officials are political subdivisions of the state of California, and the state subscribes its own oath of office for state employees as well as employees of all counties, cities, and other subdivisions of the state. And that is under California Constitution, Article 20, Section 3, which prescribes the actual oath. And that oath is the one that we give to all the officials that are in office at the city level. And it is word for word verbatim, and that is the law that we are required to give that specific oath, and it does not include the last phrase, "So help me God." So that's the answer.
Thank you. Do any of my council colleagues have a question for the city attorney? Okay, thank you, City Attorney Pam Lee. David Palman, you're next. Hello, David.
So I have a response to both of the previous public comments, but I already have what I wanted to say tonight. So again, just seven more days until I can again state my home address. I've mentioned on several occasions that the school board has a public comment availability before they go into closed session. As a reminder, they begin their meetings, I guess I didn't have to say this, with three of you former school board members, did right? As a reminder, they begin their meetings at 6:00 PM with a call to order, then they go into closed session and return to the chamber for a 7:00 PM start to the regular meeting. One of my frustrations is frequently their roll call just after 6:00 PM yields responses from less than seven members. The other members, according to the subsequent minutes, routinely appear sometime during the closed session. On two occasions, I have addressed the board before closed session. In both cases, the same board member was not present for my comments. It was borne out during their last meeting that I had presented fresh data on the real estate they were discussing that was not contained in the staff report that was generated before the agenda was published. This late arrival has traditionally been a very vocal member of the board, so they're not hearing my comments, and that's disappointing to me. So on September 8th, the mayor was a late arrival. We had heard during the August 28th meeting, discussing a change to the Monday council meetings about some residents being frustrated about not knowing when council meetings had been moved to on a non-Thursdays date. September 8th was a Monday. If residents tuned into TV3 for a 7:00 PM start and it was not there at 7:00 PM, does this not continue the frustration of some? Do they wonder if they have the wrong date again? Wouldn't it have been prudent for Mayor Pro Tem Johnson to see that the mayor was not present shortly before 7:00 PM and call the meeting to order when the clock struck 7:00 PM? When the mayor arrived at 7:10, she could have passed the gavel back to him. Not in my script, of course, but did we notice tonight that the meeting did not start at 7:00 PM? So that's the conclusion of that, but I would respectfully request that item 7C be pulled from the consent calendar to allow more discussion among council members, and I would like to make some additional comments which were not raised at the August 28th meeting about changing the meeting date. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. I ask for council consensus to now hear item 9A, Sister City Program.
Concur.
Okay, having council, I have council consensus, item 9A, Sister City Program. City manager, do we have a report on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. Item 9A of tonight's regular meeting agenda is in response to a request that our office received in to the attention of the City Council with a proposal to establish a sister-city relationship. The overview of this request will be presented by Community and Cultural Services Director Annie Hilton, and following her presentation, she and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. The city of Cerritos' Sister City designation policy states, "Cerritos-based organizations may seek City Council approval to establish a sister-city relationship with a prospective city by submitting an application to the City Council. Organizations are required to submit a letter of request with a justification for the proposed sister-city relationship. A reciprocal letter of intent from the prospective city should accompany the sister-city application. On September 17th, the City Council received a letter from Pongasinan Brotherhood USA Incorporated and San Carlinian Organization of Southern California. The letter respectfully requests the City Council's consideration of establishing a sister-city relationship between the city of Cerritos and the city of San Carlos, Province of Pongasinan, Republic of the Philippines. The Pongasinan Brotherhood USA Incorporated is a Cerritos-based Section 501(c)(3) tax-exempt nonprofit organization. The San Carlinian Organization of Southern California is an organization under the umbrella of Pongasinan Brotherhood USA. The letter notes Cerritos' rich diversity and that many Cerritos residents trace their roots to the Philippines and the city of San Carlos. The letter states, "The organizations are prepared to assist with the planning, coordination, and development of programs that will help ensure the success of this partnership." Additionally, on September 17th, the city received a sister-city letter of intent from the mayor of San Carlos, the Honorable Julia Rissuelo. The letter states, "The envisioned sister-cityhood is rooted in the spirit of mutual cooperation, cultural understanding, and people-to-people exchanges. We are hopeful that the city of Cerritos shares our vision of cooperation and solidarity. This partnership, once formalized, will serve as a meaningful bridge between our peoples and a legacy of unity across borders." Both the letter of request and the letter of intent meet the criteria outlined in the sister-city policy. The city of San Carlos has a land area of more than 65 square miles. Its population, as determined by the 2020 census, was more than 250,000, excuse me, 205,000. According to the city of San Carlos website, San Carlos is envisioned to be an environment-friendly agro-industrial education and tourism center of Pongasinan with upbeat and robust commercial activities structured on efficient services, harmonious relationships, and peace towards sustainable development and improved quality of life for its people. The sister-city designation policy states, "Sister-city programs are not supported by city staff and/or financial resources unless specifically authorized by a majority vote of the City Council. If the sister-city with San Carlos is approved, it has been represented that Pongasinan Brotherhood USA and the San Carlinian Organization of Southern California will assist with the planning, coordination, and development of programs that will help ensure the success of the sister-city designation. Nonetheless, it is anticipated there may be incidental expenses for a dignitary event to complete ceremonial actions related to the sister-city program. The expenses would be covered by existing funds in the city's budget for programs and meetings. It is respectfully recommended that the Cerritos City Council review and consider the information provided in this report, open public comment, and select one of the following options. 2A, approve the sister-city relationship with the city of San Carlos, Province of Pongasinan, Republic of the Philippines, and adopt a resolution, or decline the proposed sister-city relationship and receive and file this report." This concludes my report, and this time, City Manager Robert Lopez and I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for the report, Annie Hilton. Do we have any questions from the council? Councilmember Sofia Se.
Thank you, Ms. Annie, for your clarification. Just have a quick question, you know, I just want to, in short, supporting the Cerritos City Program, Sister City Program, is a way of to make the city more globally connect and culturally enriched and economically vibrant while fostering meaningful relationship worldwide. I truly support that. And, you know, as the council member, I was thinking about, do we any cost to our city? That you have mentioned is not, there's no cost to our city, am I right? No allocation, allocate finance aspect.
Thank you for your question, Councilmember Se. We anticipate there would be minimal expenses to the city, such as light refreshments if there were to be a signing ceremony or other dignitary events, and we anticipate that those expenses would be absorbed in our existing budget. We do have a budget for programs and meetings, so we would expect minimal costs. Anything beyond that, of course, would be brought to the City Council for consideration.
Okay, thank you. That clear my questions here. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Councilmember Hong.
No, thank you.
Councilmember Polito.
I don't have any questions at this time, but I just want to make some supportive remarks. I'm excited to see this come before the City Council. It was honored to join with Mayor Pro Tem Johnson to be a part of the subcommittee for the sister-city designation. I wanted to say that I could personally attest to the involvement of the Pongasinan Brotherhood USA Incorporated, as well as the San Carlinian Organization of Southern California, as being active, very active members of our community here in Cerritos and the broader Southern California region. Many of their leaders, past leaders and members are among the more active members of our community and really are a great reflection upon the province of Pongasinan, as well as the city of San Carlos, as well as many of those who are, have been longtime residents of the city of Cerritos. It's a great reflection on us. So I just wanted to make some proud, strong, supportive statements in support of this agenda item. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
No questions at this time.
I will now open for public comment on this item. Sue Ann Tumake. After Sue Ann Tumake, we'll have Christine Konsooji, and then Maria Gamble.
Good evening to the city of Cerritos council members, Mayor Frank Yokayama, Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, Councilmember Hong, Se, and Polito. Thank you first and foremost for providing this opportunity to provide a sister-city partnership between Cerritos City and Pongasinan. I have grown up with this city since the fourth grade after immigrating from the Philippines, and I'm a proud product of the ABC Unified School District and alumna of Cerritos High School, 1989. Currently, I am the president of the Pongasinan Brotherhood, Pongasinan Brotherhood USA Inc. and immediate past president of the San Carlinian Organization of Southern California, both of which have been active since the late 1970s. So what does this sister-city, what can the sister-city partnership provide between San Carlos City and Cerritos? Both cities share a commitment to education, community, and cultural pride. Both sister-city, both cities value history, heritage, economic growth, rooted in local industries and global connections. A sister-city relationship would promote cross-cultural understanding and collaboration between the United States and Philippines. If you could please allow me a few moments, I'd like to give a few points and introduction of the rich culture and history of San Carlos, Pongasinan. San Carlos, Pongasinan was a key site during the World War II. Many of its residents participated as soldiers of the United States Armed Forces of the Far East. Several have garnered the Congressional Gold Medal Award, and they have been awarded it, and which will be provided as a display to celebrate Filipino-American History Month in the library. They also played a key involvement in helping Lieutenant Edwin Ramsey of the 26th Cavalry Regiment, a guerrilla leader and an officer who led the last American cavalry charge in military history. Currently, the city of San Carlos hosts a minor basilica of Santo, Saint Dominic, excuse me, I'm so nervous. It is a spiritual and historical landmark that was officially designated as a minor basilica in 2023 by the late Pope Francis. In terms of economic and cultural strengths, it is a hub for agriculture and trade. It is a top producer of carabao mangoes, and it is known for bamboo craftsmanship that includes huts, furniture, baskets, and lampshades. In April, it celebrates the annual Mango Bamboo Festival, an opportunity for Cerritos to engage in cultural exchange and co-celebrations. The residents who are of San Carlinian and Pongasinan roots have provided many economic contributions to the city of Cerritos. It hosts its annual picnics at the parks that Cerritos provides. At the Sheraton, it hosted galas, including my own inauguration in 2023 as president of the San Carlinian Organization. Annually, it uses the city of Cerritos, the Cerritos Center for Performing Arts for its annual holiday party. San Carlos is home to over 205,000 residents, and many of those immigrants have called California and Cerritos home. Through the sister, through a sister-city relationship with Cerritos and San Carlos City, we can build lasting bonds of friendship, cooperation, and shared progress. Let's plant the seed of partnership and let it grow like our mangoes and bamboo into something very fruitful for generations to come. Thank you for this opportunity. I'd also like to recognize in attendance officials from the Los Angeles Consul General's Office, Deputy Consul Marie Alni Gamble, and Consul Maynard Malion for attending this City Council meeting.
Thank you, Sue, thank you, Sue Ann. Yes, and I also do want to recognize from the Philippine consulate general office in Los Angeles, we have with us Consul Francis Maynard Malion, thank you for attending, and we have Deputy Consul General Maria Alni Gamble, thank you for attending. Next, for the speakers, we're going to have Christine Konsooji, and then we're going to have Maria Gamble, and then we're going to have Demavent Karino. and then we're going to have Maria Gamble, and then we're going to have Demaven Carino.
Good evening, Mayor and the City Council. Thank you so much for having us tonight. San Carlos Pangasinan, the Guinness World Record holder of the sweetest carabao mangoes. It's just like Cerritos. It's sweet, it's warm, just like your people and the San, and the Pangasinan people. I've been a part of it. I'm friends with Pangasinan people. I work with Pangasinan people, and very proud to say that I belong to organizations which are led by this amazing Pangasinan people. I think this is a great, this is a great Sister City partnership. I mean, definitely, San Carlos is a thriving hub for agriculture, trade, and small business, making it a natural partner for Cerritos entrepreneurial spirit. A Sister City connection would not only celebrate the culture, the heritage, but also open doors for business exchange, tourism, and friendship. And as Sue Ann said, as fruitful as the San Carlos mangoes themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Maria Gamble?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and the City Council of Cerritos. My name is Maria Gamble, and I am the Deputy Consul General of the Philippine Consulate General in Los Angeles. And I am here on behalf of Consul General Adelio Angelito S. Cruz, and of course, the rest of my colleagues from the Philippine consulate. We are here to convey our support to the requests of the Filipino community in Cerritos, particularly the Pangasinan Brotherhood USA, and of course, the San Carlinian Organization of SOCal, their requests for the establishment of a Sister City relationship between, between the City of Cerritos and the City of San Carlos in Pangasinan. We thank the City Council for considering this proposal, and we believe that Sister City arrangements help foster people-to-people exchanges and lead to positive developments for both Cerritos and San Carlos. And given that next year is the 80th anniversary of diplomatic relations between the Philippines and the United States, this particular arrangement will further enforce the strong and stable and close ties between our two countries. Maraming salamat po, and good evening.
Thank you so much, Deputy Consul General Demaven Carino.
Good evening, everyone. Honorable Mayor Frank Yokiyama, Mayor Protem, Linda Johnson, and Councilmembers Jennifer Hong, Mark Polito, and Sofia Se. My name is Demaven Carino, and I'm currently serving as the Philam Chamber, as the President of the Philam Chamber of Commerce of Cerritos. And I'm truly honored to speak to you guys tonight in support of the proposed Sister City partnership between the City of Cerritos and the San Carlos Pangasinan in the Philippines. As someone who's lived in Cerritos for over 20 years and raised my family here, I've seen firsthand how much this city values diversity, global connection, and community pride. Cerritos is a home, is home to a vibrant Filipino-American population, and this Sister City relationship would be a meaningful recognition of the cultural ties that already exist. It would also create new pathways for growth in educational, cultural understanding, and commerce. San Carlos, as Sue Ann mentioned, is also called the, known as the Mango Bamboo capital of the Philippines, is a city with a strong entrepreneurial spirit and rich cultural heritage. And by forming this partnership, Cerritos can open doors to mutual and beneficial exchange from student learning opportunities to cultural programs, from tourism and promotion of business and collaborations. These exchanges strengthen not only our communities, but also the friendship and goodwill that reach across the oceans. For our chamber, this program means more than a symbolic recognition. It represents a bridge of opportunity where local businesses and organizations in Cerritos can connect with counterparts abroad and create networks that can inspire innovation, foster mentorship, and encourage investment. It highlights the values of family resilience, and progress that both Cerritos and San Carlos share. So on behalf of the Filipino-American Chamber of Commerce of Cerritos, and we are here today to support the Pangasinan Brotherhood of USA and San Carlinian Organization to, to promote and to, to support the relation, the Sister City program to move forward and to create a relationship that's vibrant and impactful for years to come. Thank you so much for your leadership and for continuing to make Cerritos a city that celebrates diversity and building, while building bridges in the world. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dem. Eddie Ferrer. And then after Eddie Ferrer, Neil Estrada is next.
This is the big news. Thank you very much, Honorable Mayor Aurelio Yokiyama, and the esteemed members of the City Council. Why did I say this is the big news? Actually, this is a dream. When my wife and I got married, we spent our honeymoon in the City of Cerritos, in a small apartment over here, close by this area. So it's memorable to me. And at this very moment, the City of San Carlos, and to the kindness of the Secretary of the Department of Government in Manila, actually called me, more so the mayor, said, Eddie, can you please give us a breakdown of the news that's happening to you tonight in the City of Cerritos? Being a former broadcaster myself, and I said, I'll give you a good rundown of the story, Mayor. And tonight, I also invited somebody here, our, our, my cameraman, I call him my cameraman. He's, boy, Amanda, but he's over here with me. And also a Chinese friend of mine to join me too, because we're going to make a documentary as of now, the old way of doing broadcasts. So let me just express the desire and the eagerness of the City of San Carlos, the population itself, because of the fact that there is so much that we could share together. Let me tell you once with your kind approval. So I am looking forward to something that's very significant to come, and we will be part of you and you part of us. The City of San Carlos is going to be open. If you look at the map of Pangasinan, it's like the United States of America. It's just like the, you know, the landscape there. And I'm happy and proud to say that San Carlos occupies almost, I think, one-third of the province of Pangasinan. It's very historical because our, our parish church out there was at least built in 1518. Can you believe that? 1518. So the relationship of our history with the United States is beautiful. And tonight, just like Sue Ann said, I'd like to take this opportunity also that most of the constituents of Pangasinan, even my own father. My own father was with General Eisenhower, and he was also with, with General MacArthur then. My father is a pilot, and the first time that when he was, when General Eisenhower went there, he was a colonel, and my father had the opportunity of flying him, because my father is a pilot. And General Eisenhower, at that time Colonel Eisenhower, would like to know how to fly, and my father took that time and opportunity. So as a broadcaster, my time is about to end, and I say thank you very much. And we pray that you would consider, you know, acceptance of our City of San Carlos. Maraming salamat po. Thank you.
Thank you, Eddie Ferrer. Neil Estrada?
Good evening, City Council. Great Mayor Frank Yokiyama. Thanks for having me. I'm just here to pledge my support for the Sister Cities of Cerritos and San Carlos. As many of you know, I actually grew up in Cerritos. First moved here, immigrated from the Philippines, where my mom's from San Carlos, my dad's from Cala Shao. Was a former president of Pangasinan Brotherhood, and although I haven't lived in Cerritos since 2004, I'm in Cerritos every week. As many of you know, I run a lot of different organizations in and around Orange County and LA County. But I always come back to Cerritos because Cerritos is the hometown. Through the relationships that I've built with these other organizations, so many events have taken place here. We've had a trade show in Cerritos. We'd had the Coalition of Filipino-Americans of Chambers of Commerce host their events over and over at the Sheraton. Cala Shao Association, the parks at the picnic, all right, also, and at the Cerritos Performing Arts Center. You three were there actually, right, at the library this past Saturday. That was an event to remember, okay, and this is not to impress anybody about anything that we do. But the City of Cerritos can also learn from people of Pangasinan, people from San Carlos, because we have something called the Bionihan Spirit. So it's more than just economics. It's more than just play. It's more than just good times. It's family. And so what happened at that event that night is Hugo, who ran the event, basically said, this is the best event I've ever seen at the Cerritos Library, and it's because of the people. So working together, we can develop a relationship not just based on economics, but based on always putting people first before our own needs, so we can serve the greater good of the community. This is what we can bring to you, and this is why I've always come back to Cerritos and always recommended all the other organizations to please take their visit to Cerritos, because it's vibrant, it's welcoming, it's home, not just for me, but for a lot of San Carlinians and people from Pangasinan. So over and over and over again, we return, we serve Cerritos, and in return, we would like Cerritos to have a partnership with not only Pangasinan, but with our sacred city of San Carlos, because so many of the family members and relatives from San Carlos actually live here and support the local economy, the churches, and other sectors of the organization. And in Cerritos, we thrive because of you and your leadership. So I'm here in support, and if there's any questions, anyone wants to ask me outside, I'm here for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. That was a well-attended event on Saturday night. Is there any other speakers on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Does the council have any questions or comments? Councilmember Sofia Se?
Thank you. This is to the General Counsel from Los Angeles, and to the people who elder, little older than me, and I say salamat po. Yes, to the younger people, I say salamo. And you come over, give all the testimony. You don't really need to. I get so excited, right? I am support this one, definitely, because this is so called, by backing this program, I would like to say we invest in a more connected, culturally enriched, and globally aware to our city. And when you talk about mango and bamboo, that's my favorite fruits. Mango represent warm. The people from the city must be warm. Because it's always warm. I love mango, mango over rice, sweet rice. And bamboo's also sweet too. So I just want to let you know, definitely, I learned so much about that, that city, and I'll be looking forward to go there with my own pay, and I want to go see it, because I really want to, I don't know what else to say. Definitely, I want to tell my Mayor Protem, like, when you decided to go visit the city, and I say, hey, and then I, I want to go there too, because really, to see other culture people, to really visit them, you learn more about them. And mango bamboo, actually, I do have mango at my son's house. So I was always waiting when it's mature day, and I collecting it, and I think I brought it back to our city staff to let them taste it, see what is mango real one from the yard. So definitely, you don't have to persuade me. I will support this, not just only for Philippine, for Filipino, for other culture, other people too. We do need, invest this program, and we do need it connected to all people. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Hong, any questions or comments?
Hello. Good evening, welcome, and thank you for all coming. I'm very impressed with all the process, that it was so efficient, and you guys put it all together. I'm very impressed with all the hard works you've been doing, and I heard a lot of very promising suggestion and cultural exchange, everything. I'm very excited about that, and I'm looking forward to actually, we can execute all this and really benefit the City of Cerritos. I'll be more than happy to see that, and this would be a very good example for setting up to the Cerritos City to considering to have order Sister City internationally. So thank you for all your efforts, and now that you guys work so hard, I'm so pleased to hear that, and I'm looking forward to a significant, significant success in the future to come. Thank you so much, and welcome. Thank you for coming.
Councilmember Polito?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to give my heartfelt gratitude to all the folks who worked real hard to bring this Sister City opportunity together. To my colleague Mayor Protem Johnson, Mr. Mayor Yokiyama, for pointing us to the committee. But especially all of those leaders who are present here tonight, and those who are unable to make it, who I know who are in strong support of this endeavor. But I want to highlight the, the folks who came up and, and gave testimony tonight. I want to start with Ms. Sue Ann Estrada Tumake, who I met when I was 13 years old. And, and who knew in that garage party, you know, my cousins back in the early 80s, that we would be doing something so meaningful to bridge two countries, you know, two, two communities together. It was, it was music and celebration that brought us together in that garage, celebrating my cousin's birthday. But again, here we are doing the same thing, because it is countless events within our community, our shared community, that has brought us together. So when she comes here and she speaks of, you know, the potential for a bond, potential for partnership, potential for this beautiful enrichment for our two countries, our two communities, our two cities. That's an understatement about the possibilities. And I also want to highlight the guy sitting right next to her, her younger brother, who just days ago helped create a vision for a grand reunion. I don't know if a lot, a lot of people know this, but it was, it was kind of an unsung event that happened at the Skyline Room at the Cerritos Library, which he spoke about. This grand reunion of sons and daughters of Cerritos from all the different high schools who have had their respective reunions at Cerritos High School, Gar High School, Artesia, Whitney, St. Joseph, St. John Bosco, you know, you name it, all the different schools that sons and daughters of Cerritos have attended over the many decades. But it's rare that they would get together across schools. And that was a vision from a son of St. Carlos, who grew up here, who decided to, hey, for all those who grew up back in the day in the 80s and the 90s, let's come together. We survived a lot of, I'm just going to say it, strife and violence that happened in the 80s, and we lived to tell the tale, we raised families, we've started businesses, we've been elected to office, but let's come together in a humble way to celebrate something special here. But let's come together in a humble way to celebrate something special here in Cerritos. And that guy, Neil Estrada, who spoke. These are two, you know, a son and a daughter of Cerritos, and a son and a daughter of St. Carlos. So there is just this, that's just an example, a manifestation of how close ties we have, that we're just beginning to realize now, you know, in this moment. And then the other guy that's sitting next to Sue Anne, I consider him like one of the strongest pillars of this community, Mr. Eddie Ferrer, who I got to know through an organization that I kind of married into. And that's Pangasinan Brotherhood USA Incorporated leader there. Because I, my family's not from Pangasinan, but I'm proud that I married up, I married a daughter of being alone on Pangasinan, which is about an hour's drive east from San Carlos, because that's where my in-laws met, fell in love, and started the family here in Cerritos. So I got to know Mr. Eddie Ferrer as a community leader, but he is also a longtime business leader. Very humble, as you can heard from his deep booming voice. Really a voice, truly a generation in the Philippines through his broadcast career, but also here in the United States, an unsung voice of unity and service for our community. And as you heard his story, got to start in his marriage right here in Cerritos. All of these personal stories, and all the other speakers spoke really beautifully, eloquently about their love for Cerritos, their love for San Carlos. And I think truly, it was a joy for me to be able to hear all of your beautiful words of support for this partnership. And so I'll just wrap up those comments, those personal comments, again, with love and gratitude for all the work that was put in for this sister city partnership. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Linda Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really want to thank the speakers that came out tonight. Thank you to each and one of you that came and spoke, and just overwhelmed by the stories that you shared. I got a little emotional there, but really appreciate the time that you came out on a moment's notice. Thank you, Annie, for the well-written report, and that you also included some of the history of San Carlos, as well as their city's vision and mission statements. It proves that San Carlos would be a perfect fit as a sister city with the city of Cerritos, and they are aligned with our own city's goals. I look forward as this relationship develops, and eager to see the economic development and cultural programs that this will bring for both cities. I want to recognize our past mayors and councilmembers of Cerritos that have entered into sister city relationships from the countries of Brazil, Taiwan, and Mexico. They, too, realize the benefit of having such a relationship would strengthen cultural ties with their cities, and more importantly, ethnic and racial tolerance. I'd like to personally thank the consulate general of the Philippines, Adelio Cruz, for his support. I'm pleased to see that we have Deputy Consul General Maria Anlee Gamble and Consul Maynard Mallien with us here tonight. This is a historic moment for the city of Cerritos and the city of San Carlos. The Congen's Office were always providing assistance and guidance as we were moving along in the process. While we were both in the Philippines last July, the Congen and I had extensive conversations about the sister city programs and its benefits that it would bring. Lastly, I'd like to give a big shout-out and much appreciation to Sue Anne Estrada Tumakay, President of Pangasinan Brotherhood, and their officers and members, as well as Donna Mejia, President of the San Carlian Organization of Southern California, for submitting the letter of request to the city of Cerritos. These organizations have stepped up to take on the sister city program. They will have the responsibility of doing the heavy lifting, and I am truly grateful that they have taken the initiative to establish this historic relationship with both cities. Other individuals that I'd also like to recognize are Eddie and Renee Ferrer, Jose and Doris Iglesias, and Dan Nino. We have had several breakfast meetings together, and I was always encouraged by their level of support that they had offered me. This city council, myself especially, am committed to the success of the program, and I look forward to working alongside with them to grow it. And also another thanks to the Philippine American Chamber of Commerce of Cerritos. Tonight, we had President Demavon Corino, as well as Christine Konsoongji, who are always lending their support on city initiatives, and to Ellen Rodriguez Swing, who could not be with us here tonight. And last, thank you to the Honorable Mayor Julia Rissuelo, Mayor of the City of San Carlos Pangasinan, for his trust and support to enter into a sister city agreement with the city of Cerritos. We have a shared vision, and together, we will establish a program both cities can be proud of. So I hope that this is just the beginning of the opening of the floodgates to move to more nonprofit organizations that want to establish a sister city with the city of Cerritos. Currently, there is a nonprofit organization working on a sister city relationship with the city in India. And I'm very excited to see that come before the council very soon. As I have mentioned earlier, about ethnic and racial tolerance, it builds stronger communities, cooperation, and preservation of heritage. Madaming Salama Po Sa'inyon Lahat, and to Mayor Frank Aurelio Yokiyama, Councilmembers Mark Polito, Councilmember Sofia Say, and Councilmember Jennifer Hong. To each and every one of you for your support to establish a sister city program with the Philippines. Thank you very much.
Yes. I am very I'm very proud of this Cerrito City Council that is working together for the residents of our city, our diverse community. And part of that diverse, that diverse community is a robust, active Filipino community, a community of Filipino residents and Filipino businesses, and Filipino visitors to Cerritos to visit, to recreate, to shop, and to dine in our city of Cerritos. I am glad that this council worked together and identified as one of the things to to lift up the diversity, which is the strength of our city, is by looking at sister city relationships. That's why I created, for the first time in the history of Cerritos, a sister cities internal working group. So that the Cerrito City Council, with our community organizations and our residents, can, moving forward, look at building upon our sister city relationships today and in the future. And thank you to my appointees to the sister cities internal working group. Councilmember and former Mayor Mark Polito, and Mayor Protem Linda Johnson, for doing the heavy lifting of the work of the sister cities internal working group to bring it forward to where we are tonight. And thank you to the extra heavy lifting that Mayor Protem Linda Johnson did to take time out of her schedule to go on an exploratory trip to the Philippines and do the necessary important research and work and networking to make sure we make the right choice for a sister city with the Philippines. Thank you, Linda. This city of Cerritos has been blessed, not only with our diverse residents, our diverse community of residents, that includes the robust Filipino community. We've been blessed to have a strong relationship with the Philippines Consulate General of Los Angeles. Ever since Linda and I were on the council together, starting with the 2022 election, I remember Council Philippines Consul General Edgar Badajos coming to Cerritos and meeting with me and Linda, and with former Mayor Mark Polito, and visiting the Sculpture Garden, and visiting the library, and having a sit-down conversation in the Skyline Room of the Cerritos Library about working together in a relationship between the Philippines Consulate General of Los Angeles and the Philippines and the city of Cerritos. And that dialogue, that conversation, that relationship continued throughout Consul General Edgar Badajos's posting in the Philippines Consulate General. And then it continued with new excitement and with new energy with current Consul General Adel Cruz. So it's so meaningful, but not unexpected, that the Philippines Consulate General of Los Angeles is here tonight. Because this is just a continuation of the strong partnership and relationship of the city of Cerritos with the Philippines through the Consulate General of Los Angeles. So thank you, Maynard, and thank you, Maria, for being here. And give our best regards to the Consul General. This has been a long time coming, because the Filipino residents of Cerritos have always been here as part of our fantastic, diverse community of residents of Cerritos since the 70s, if not earlier. And the city of Cerritos is that special city that we have over 60% Asian-American Pacific Islander residents of Cerritos, over 60% of the Cerritos residents are Asian-American Pacific Islander. And the biggest group of Asian-American Pacific Islanders in Cerritos is the Filipino residents. So that's why I say this is a long time coming, because the city of Cerritos has always acknowledged through the past actions of the Cerrito City councils, of the Cerrito City councils before us, that sister cities are an important relationship for the city of Cerritos. And past Cerrito City councils have passed resolutions creating sister city relationships. And the city of Cerritos, up until tonight, has three sister city relationships that add to the diversity of our city, the recognition of the diversity of our city. And we currently have a sister city relationship with Itapatinga, Brazil. We have a sister city relationship with New Taipei, City, Taiwan. And we have a sister city relationship with the city of Loretto, Baja, California, Mexico. So I'm thankful to this council for working together to present tonight this long overdue opportunity to have a fourth sister city, not the last, but a fourth sister city with the city of San Carlos Pangasinan Philippines. Thank you, Cerrito City Council. I'm glad that this will be a part of our year together. Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion.
Second.
I'll repeat the motion. It is to approve the sister city relationship with the city of San Carlos, Province of Pangasinan, Republic of the Philippines, and waive full reading of and adopt a resolution of the City Council of the city of Cerritos declaring a sister city relationship with the city of San Carlos, Province of Pangasinan, Republic of the Philippines.
Second.
My heart is full that I heard all of my council colleagues rush to second it. Thank you, Jennifer, and Sofia, and Mark. I did hear Mark say the second a little bit before the two of you. So, but I want, it means a lot to me, Sofia and Jennifer, that you likewise wanted to second Linda's motion. Let's vote.
The motion passes on a vote of five to zero.
Okay. I am very emotional right now. It is 9:05. Let's take a break, and let's restart the city council meeting at exactly 9:15. It is nine oh five, let's take a break and let's start, let's restart the city council meeting at exactly nine fifteen.
Yes, thank you, may members of the city council. The special meeting item, agenda item nine A uh follows up uh on um grant source related to park improvements. Um, we have additional information to report this evening. The overview of this item will be presented by Community and Cultural Services Director Annie Hilton. And following your presentation, she and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. On September eighth, staff presented a report to the city council titled Review and Consideration of Options Related to Measure A Funding Compliance Requirements. The city council directed staff to maintain the city's existing reservation and class policies at Cerritos Park East and Liberty Park Two that provide priority reservations and reduced class fees for Cerritos residents. This action renders the city being not in good standing under Measure A compliance criteria and disqualifies the city from receiving any current or future Measure A funding. At the request of two city council members and in light of new information, staff is resubmitting this item for further consideration. In addition to the formula based Measure A allocations, the city would forfeit by being designated not in good standing. Staff has been informed of approximately fifty eight million dollars in competitive Measure A funding available in two thousand twenty five to eligible Los Angeles County jurisdictions. To regain eligibility to apply for any Measure A funding, the city would need to revise its policies to allow residents and non-residents to reserve meeting rooms and picnic shelters at Cerritos Park East concurrently. In addition, non-residents would need to be granted the same reservation access to athletic fields at Cerritos Park East as residents. The Liberty Park Two totlock program would also be required to implement a uniform fee structure charging residents and non-residents the same rate. The city would also be required to change its policies to allow residents and non-residents to register concurrently for activities, classes, events, and programs held at Cerritos Park East and Liberty Park Two. The city would also need to implement a uniform fee structure charging residents and non-residents the same rates for activities at Cerritos Park East and Liberty Park Two. These changes would also apply to very popular programs, including adaptive recreation and preschool classes. The city often receives inquiries from non-residents who are interested in participating in these programs. Therefore, it is anticipated that eliminating the resident priority reservation policy may result in reduced access for Cerritos residents. Residents would still receive priority for registration and lower fees for activities offered at other facilities, such as the swim center, golf course, and library. The city's two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty six capital improvement program includes the Heritage Park Play Island renovation with a budget allocation of one million dollars. This project would provide for the design and construction of renovated play areas, pathways, and associated site improvements at the Heritage Park Play Island. Implementation of this project is contingent upon the approval of funding by the Los Angeles County Regional Parks and Open Space District. If the city is not in compliance with the county's nondiscrimination policy, it will forfeit access to Measure A formula based funds currently estimated at approximately one point nine million dollars. As a result, the Heritage Park Play Island renovation project would be postponed until a future time when alternate funds become available. council review and consider the information provided in this report in open public comment and select one of the following options: 2a, direct staff to continue the city's current reservation and class policies at Cerritos Park East and Liberty Park 2 that provide priority reservations and reduce class fees for Cerritos residents, resulting in the city being not in good standing for Measure A funding, or 2b, direct staff to change the city's reservation and class policies at Cerritos Park East and Liberty Park 2 effective October 15th, 2025 to comply with the Measure A agreement requirements. This concludes my report, and at this time, City Manager Robert Lopez, Public Works Director Alvin Papa, and I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for the report, Annie Hilton, and Alvin Papa, and Samir Patel. Do we have any questions from the council? Councilmember Say.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Anna, for providing such detailed information to me. Couple of questions I need to ask the city manager and Alvin Papa. If we revise our policy to align with the county requirement and accept their funding, and we lose some local control over facilities, am I right?
We would have control over the maintenance and use of the facility, but in order to comply with the county requirement, the reservation policy would need to be updated.
So will affect our residents' choice there?
It could impact the ability for Cerritos residents. They would be in the same equal footing with non-residents for timing of access and fees.
Currently, I know some of the situation we cannot have even for, such as I did study during my camping time, and I think I discussed with you about the senior citizen, the emerging calling program. And while other cities can have it, but our city cannot due to we don't own fire station. The fire station is run by, I believe, it's county, am I right? So that does lose a lot of opportunity for our resident. Same thing with the Liberty Park or Don Canapi Park. Some of the area we're not allowed to use, we have to pay for, but when the land is on our property, our Cerritos property. So my second question is, a few year later, you know, you take this 1.9 million, it is possible to revise the policy. Are we permanently bound by the county requirement once we accept the funding?
One of the conditions for funding is my understanding, and I'll defer to Ms. Hilton and Mr. Papa for any additional updates, but one requirement is that the city record a covenant on the property, and the intent of that is to ensure that the nondiscrimination clause runs with the land. So the intent is that it run in perpetuity.
My last question, you know, I always go, always forward support that the tot lot program and others. It's going to be affect the preschool program that we have right now.
I'll defer to Ms. Hilton to help answer that question.
I remember you did say something, yeah. I just want to confirm.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Say, you are correct. This would affect the tot lot program that is offered at the Liberty Park 2 building. Currently, priority is given to Cerritos residents to enroll first, and, but it is open to non-residents, and the residents pay a lower fee than non-residents. So it would affect that program.
I have two more questions. Ask, why we bring this up since the last time we already passed already 322 regarding this Measure 8 usage?
Yes, this was brought up this evening at the request of two council members that was indicated in the staff report.
And then you updated, I just, we have to comply with the policy, agree with the county?
The request came in light of the fact that there is additional information that we've reported related to additional grant resources that the city would not be eligible for if we were not compliant with the Measure A requirements.
I do want to say something here, Mayor and Mayor Protem. I appreciate you bring the Measure 8 back for discussion. At the time, it was a present that I was not aware of the funding agreement equates with the county, and even our staff didn't know at that time. So now we had to comply with this special, with this usage of our facility. I just cannot support. I mean, I don't want to say support. I think it's really hard for me to make the decision. What is the residents' rights? And I will make my conclusion at the second round. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember Say. And I will say at this time, I just want to make a comment at this time, that after the September 8, 2025 city council meeting, I looked over the budget. I looked at the budget that this city council approved unanimously back in June, and I instructed, I called the city attorney, and I called the city manager, and I instructed the city manager to call a special meeting of the Cerritos City Council for tonight with this agenda item, item 9A. So I'm not certain exactly why it says at the request of two members of the city council, but I know that I, by myself, directed the city manager to call this special meeting and to agendize this item. If a second city council member made a request to you, that's between you and them, I instruct you to do this on my own, as the mayor of Cerritos. Okay? So I'm glad that this was agendized for tonight as a special, as part of a special meeting of the Cerritos City Council. Any questions? Councilmember Hong.
Well, thank you. I think we all know why this item is coming back. Thank you, Mayor, for explaining that, and I also thank you for your concern about our budget situation. It's really hard for me to say no about this because I know the city, we need those funds. You know, it's hard for me to say no about this one. However, I think as a resident, we all moved to Cerritos, and we spent a good money on our housing here. And I, as a resident, I think the residents should have that first priority and a priority reservation and special discount, because I feel like we, I want to have a local control, you know? I know we're getting all the pressures from all the majors that they're saying, okay, if you don't comply to this, we're going to take away from here and that and that. But you know what? I hope that our city can have our local control, because this is all the residents are looking forward to, because I know, like, for example, like park, we can close the park, or we can fence it, because we cannot say, oh, only if this park is maintained by city of Cerritos, other cities, people couldn't come in. No, we have to open to everybody. And we know how much money that, you know, city is trying to maintain the parks. I live by a park. I know there are other people, peoples from other city came over, and they're even organized, organization, they're using our park, and they're tearing our parks apart, because they're very abusive, because they come constantly and maybe twice every week, but there's nothing we can do about it, because the park is for everyone, right? Which we understand that, but as far as this, I, I think I will stick to my first decision. You know, I still say no. I prefer the residents should have the privilege of priority reservation, and we should have a discount on this. And that's my personal opinion. Thank you.
Councilmember Patel, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I have a few questions. And just so that the viewing public could also be made acutely aware of the opportunity that we have before us for a second time. The first time, the first time we missed the opportunity. So I'm viewing this as a great second opportunity to not miss the opportunity to avail of significant resources. So the first question is, the $1.9 million that we would otherwise lose if we do not change the decision that we made last, last meeting? That would be used for our Heritage Play Park Island renovation, Mr. City Manager?
That's correct. We have a project in the CIP to do some restoration work on the island so that certain areas that are currently closed off can be reopened. And in this year's budget, it is budgeted at 1 million. Recent estimates show that it may actually be more than that. So we may, if the 1.9 million is available to us, we may be able to use more of that.
And if we, it is not made available, where would that money come from?
In the short term, it would just need to be an unfunded project that would be deferred until funding becomes available. We have a list of projects in the CIP, a long list of unfunded projects. So if it isn't funded under the funding source that was originally planned for, it would essentially be moved to the unfunded projects list. And we, I have asked our staff to look at other funding opportunities, particularly at the state level for park purposes. And so if the Measure A funding is not accessible to us, then we would seek other grant funding, either at federal or state level, so that we can still try to pursue the project as quickly as we can.
That sounds like a big, a big if.
It is an if. There's no guarantee that we would get other grant sources.
So what would be your best guess as how indefinitely the Heritage Park Island renovation would go unfunded?
Well, there are some funding opportunities that we could apply for in the coming months. The funding cycles usually happen every one to two years. What's unknown is whether we would meet all the criteria, whether we would even win if it's competitive, if there are other stronger projects that more closely align with the grant funding criteria. So if we were successful in competing for other sources, probably the earliest would be maybe one to two years from now, realistically, to try to get that fund.
So one to two years, it would remain unfunded. And you said those grant funding cycles are usually one to two years. Had we initially sought out those grant funds for this particular major project renovation?
We're always on the lookout for grant funding sources for all types of projects, not just parks, but, you know, infrastructure as well. We, because we understood that the Measure A funding could be used for this project, we hadn't looked for other specific sources until recently.
Got it. So there's really no pass indication if we would even be eligible for that alternative grant funding, because we didn't pursue it last time, because we were counting on this $1.9 million.
That's, that's correct.
Staff was counting on this?
We, we, yeah, we were, we were anticipating using the funds for this project.
And you weren't alone, alone. I was counting on it. $1.9 million that suddenly we don't have, but we were counting on it. $1.9 million that we would benefit because we're a part of this county. And a lot of non-Cerritos residents, where residents of the county of LA enjoy coming to Cerritos to use our parks, but then also to shop, dine, recreate, entertain themselves and their families aspire to move here. I think that that's one of the benefits of being a part of a county that has tremendous resources to bear and make available for opportunities like this, an infusion of $1.9 million. And how much did we have in a budget deficit that we had to cut?
We started off the beginning of the year with several million dollars of a gap. We, when we presented the preliminary budget to you, it was about a $2 million gap, and we ended up.
Significant, right? Significant. As much as this is not a small chunk of change, this is significant. Okay, those are my questions as of now. I appreciate that, so that we can understand the gravity of this situation, that we're going to have to face our community who has been waiting for the Heritage Park Play Island to be renovated, and they're going to have to wait another one to two years, if that, if we are even successful in seeking alternative funding sources. Because otherwise, it's not going to be, we're not going to dip into our reserves for this, because we're being very vigilant, as our community wants us to be, about how we spend our, our general fund, our reserves, our very cherished reserves. Okay. I may have more questions, but I'm very concerned about this. Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Do you have any questions, Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes, one quick question. Should this be approved to accept the funds from LA County tonight, would we be able to make the October 15 deadline to amend our policies and become compliant and therefore eligible to receive the Measure A funds?
The county has extended their deadline to October 15. It was, there was a previous deadline, but because we needed to take this to the city council for consideration, it's a policy decision, they did extend it to October 15. It is an aggressive timeline, but in conversation with members of our team, our staff can work feverishly to implement what would be required to comply, if approved, if the changes were approved tonight.
Thank you.
I will also add that, two things. Measure A funds, the way they're calculated, they are, it's a special parcel tax for improved property. So every resident that owns property in the city does pay into Measure A, as long as they own that property and that property is developed. So the residents pay into Measure A. This is a way of getting the money that they pay into back into the city as opposed to Measure A funding going somewhere else into the county. Because if they're not expended here, they will be expended elsewhere, not in the city. So that is one aspect.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing that up, City Attorney, because you're correct. It would go back into the pool, and other cities will benefit from our parcel tax, our tax dollars.
Correct. The other aspect, I did get questions regarding this being a county fund, and as you know, Mayor Protem Johnson is a county employee, and whether or not there is a conflict of interest with her participation in this item. And I will say that there is a special carve-out, and it is not a conflict of interest for her to participate when an employee is an employee of a government entity, and the only relationship they have is as a salaried employee. And the other aspect is that this relates to grant funding from parks and recreation and the Department of the County, and Mayor Protem Johnson is not an employee of that department, and therefore, Government Code Section 1091.5 specifically allows her participation in this matter, and so she does not need to recuse herself. I just wanted to make that clear, that this is why we have the full council participating.
Just like at the last meeting. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, councilmember Hong?
Yes, like I mentioned last time, when they say not in good standing, I still think this is very ambiguous wording, okay? So I want to ask if there are any other city, if the city manager or our staff aware of that they didn't comply with this, and they still can do their local control. That's something I'm curious about.
We do know that other cities receive Measure A funding, other cities in the area have performed projects of various types with Measure A funding. I can't say too whether or not they are in good standing. That's usually between the city and the county agency representatives. That's not something that's typically advertised, but we are aware that other cities have taken advantage of Measure A funding.
And they still have their local control?
There may be cities that also have, you know, different fee schedules or There may be cities that also have, you know, uh, different fee schedules or reservation policies, but, um, we haven't dived into that. That's between the cities and the county agency that administers the grant funds.
I see. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm aware that the city of Artesia uses Measure A funding because, uh, after the first, after the September 8th city council meeting, I did ask one of the council members of the city of, of Artesia if they are, uh, um, receiving and using Measure A funding. And she confirmed, Councilmember Melissa Ramoso confirmed that they are, the city of Artesia is using Measure A funding. Um, are you, do you have any other questions? Linda, Councilmember? Uh, Mayor Protem? Um, okay, so I'm glad that there's this updated information in this, uh, agenda report for us tonight. Um, because the September 8th agenda report, and I don't want us to get confused between the two reports. I will try to be specific. So the agenda, the September 8th agenda report points out that, um, it says that the city has received a total of 1,925,664.56 cents in funding to date from Proposition A and Measure A. Okay? So that's on page one of the September 8th agenda report. So I'm trying to, I want to make sure that I'm understanding this, cause I, I think I was, uh, uh, I think I wasn't, um, um, comprehended, comprehending it exactly right. So is this correct that the city has benefited, uh, already because of Measure A funding and Proposition A funding, we've, we have received and pocketed and spent 1,925,664.56 cents in, in, in our, uh, parks and open spaces?
I'm gonna defer to Ms. Hilton to elaborate and provide clarification.
Yes, thank you for the question, Mayor Yokayama. It is correct that since this funding became available, the city has, uh, benefited from 1.9 million in funds, 1,900, one, excuse me, over 1.9 million. And that goes back to initially in 1995, the funding was first called Proposition A. And then later, when it renewed in 2016, went back to the voters, became Measure A. But initially it was Proposition A funding. And at that time in 1995, the city entered into an agreement with the county and received grant funding in the amount of 524,632 dollars to renovate the Ceritos Park East Community Center. And in 2016, the city received funding in the amount of $300,000 for the Liberty Park Annex Building. And there were other projects through the years where the funding applied, such as the, uh, skate, uh, park, um, over at the sports complex. And so collectively, that's the amount of, um, funding that the city has received since 1995.
Great. Thank you, Annie. So, so, cause I thought, just in, in reading that, reading it, the, in September 8th agenda report, I thought that was the amount that we were losing, gonna lose if we didn't, uh, meet the requirements of the Measure A funding. But that's money that we've received and benefited from in improving our parks and our open spaces, taking our parks and open spaces to the condition, to the condition they are today. We've benefited, thank you, thanks to the county of Los Angeles and Proposition A and Measure A, we've benefited in over 1.9 million dollars in funds that we've received and spent on our parks. And the parks look today the way they do in big part because of this over 1.9 million dollars. Right?
That is correct.
So then, that helps me understand page two of the September 8th report. Page two shows the amount that we're gonna lose. That's page two is the amount we're gonna lose if we're not in good standing. And I added up Measure A accumulated allocation, 1,491,986. Measure A maintenance and servicing, 355,448. And Proposition A maintenance and serving, 11,385. I added it up for myself tonight because you guys didn't add it up. You guys need to put, add it up and put the, the big dollar amount there for the city council to see and for the public to see. These three dollar amounts add up to 1,858,819 dollars. And we're going to lose access to that funding from the county if we're not in good standing, right?
That's correct.
And we're gonna lose that 1,858,819 dollars that's currently available to the city of Ceritos if we don't make these, uh, changes to our policies that the county is asking every single one of the 88 cities of Los Angeles County to comply with. Right?
That's correct.
Okay. And it's not just 1,858,819 dollars, right, Annie? Yes or no?
That is what is currently available to the city.
That's just what's currently available. We're now looking into the future. I'm, I'm thankful for this updated information because in the September 8th report, you didn't tell the council in the September 8th report that approximately 58 million dollars in competitive Measure A funding will be available in 2025 to eligible Los Angeles County jurisdictions. So if we're in good standing, we could apply for this approximately 58 million dollars to get our fair share of that, right?
There would be opportunities to apply for that funding is available to the cities throughout LA County.
The 88 cities of LA County. And if we're not in good standing, we can't apply for any of this 58 million dollars. Is that right?
That's right.
And then this agenda report tonight, a po- that gives even more information that wasn't in our September 8th report. It says that additional competitive funding is scheduled for release in 2026. Would we be, if we're not in good standing, we can't apply for that 2026 money, right?
That's what we've reported.
And then you say in this, uh, just, this new report tonight, further grant cycles anticipated in 2028 and 2029 for these same program areas. We won't be able to apply for those either if we're not in good standing. Is that right?
This would be a permanent loss of the opportunity to apply for Measure A funds.
So year after year after year after year, we cannot apply for the Measure A funding that, just in this agenda report, you've listed funding opportunities in 2025, 2026, 2028, 2029, starting with 58 million in competitive Measure A fundings in 2025, right?
Yes, that is information we've become aware of, that those opportunities do exist.
And a rhetorical question, why wasn't this in the September 8th agenda report? You don't need to answer. I'm thankful that it's in tonight's report. So let's go to public comment. Catherine Pasquale.
Good evening. I wasn't able to be here on September 8th, but I would like to speak in favor of changing the policies with our city and getting the money for our parks. So as the mom of fourth graders, as the teacher of high school age students, um, I spend a lot of time either at parks or with people who spend time at parks. And so, um, I've got a couple of comments. I've got a couple of questions. I've got a wish list. I'm just gonna fire it all at you guys. Um, okay. So first of all, it seems like we're looking at CPE in its entirety, but not, but not the swim center. And so I know residents, it's very hard to get into those swim classes. We've got our hot fingers right at the time that it's coming online. Um, my understanding is that the swim classes are not affected by this. And so I think that will put some residents at ease. Um, and as was said, residents pay into Measure A, so it'd be nice if, if we can get some of that money back into our city. Um, the other thing that I asked, and I'm gonna ask tonight, is will other surrounding cities also be making these policy changes? Maybe there's an event we wanna host and maybe Lakewood or Artesia has a better suited facility for our event. If cities all around us are also making these changes, then we as residents would have access to a wider variety of spaces. Um, I don't think that our city facilities are 100% booked all the time. We would also have the opportunity to bring in more revenue from people outside coming to book things. Um, let's see. If we take this money to fix up Heritage Park, would then Heritage Park be added to the list of facilities that we now need to give equal access to? So once we do those renovations, once we take that money, would we then put Heritage Park, those shelters, the little party place on the island, um, the classes at the Heritage Park tot lot? Would those all go on to the equal access fee structure? And if so, maybe we need to look at how many things would be left not on that fee structure? And maybe it's just easier to just change over the whole thing. Um, although as a parent of young kids, I would advocate to not include swimming, um, selfishly. Um, okay. And then also, is it all of Liberty Park or just the annex building? So would the main building classes, the, the main shelter, the big huge shelter, like, would those all be not affected by this? Um, or is it, cause, yeah, okay. You can rent the, okay. Um, I was at Heritage Park this weekend on the north side, near, what street is that? Arabella. It's disgusting. There was poop everywhere from the big birds, mud, even though it has not rained. I will not be meeting people there again. It was gross and I was kind of embarrassed that that's where I picked to meet them. Um, when I've gone to concerts in the park, like, the grass has been clean, but like, I could not get from Arabella to the picnic table without having to really dodge a lot of crap. And I mean that literally. Um, so anyway, besides the island being closed right now, I think Heritage Park could definitely use some updates, upkeeps. I don't know what's going on. I don't know how long those animals have been there. They seem to be breeding out of control. That might be a whole nother issue. And then I'm just gonna go with my usual thing I like to say about my park wish list, is that we've got 29 parks, but we go to neighboring cities for better features. Um, our parks need to have shade for both the playground and the parents who are hanging out watching, and maybe picnic structures where people are eating, water features for kids to cool off when it's hot, water bottle filling stations with filters preferably that are refrigerated. We need modern play structures, not just brighter colors of the same play structures from the eighties. We need to update them. Um, the park in Lakewood has a cool zip line, one for kids that have the ability to do it, and another for kids with disabilities who can sit and still enjoy that feature. Cypress has really cool parks with spinning features. We know what's good for kids' brains and, um, I wish we would update our structures to be more modern and not just put in a new same old, same old. So I think we should keep access to park funding from the county. Thanks.
Thank you, Catherine. Are there any other speakers on this item? Are there any other speakers on this item? David Powellman? You didn't check in, but that's okay.
Okay, well.
Thank you for speaking. Thank you for speaking.
So I think I have, I have, uh, I have the, the credit for, that I pretty much wanna follow things that are going on. And I don't know when this was posted, but I know when I got my agenda and this wasn't, this special meeting was not marked. So, um, I'm concerned about how, when this item was posted to be heard, because none of my circle of people obviously had any idea. Uh, if I was gonna be given an opportunity to speak, you know, on the consent item tonight, I would have mentioned to you, Frank, that, uh, you know, again, I'm gonna harp on this about you commenting about there not being people that come for public comment. And when this item was on the agenda, uh, the last meeting, there were three people that were here to speak on this item and, uh, they couldn't, didn't wanna wait for the item that had been moved to be handled before. So, um, you know, those people might be here tonight if they had known this topic was gonna come up again. I hate this comment about non-discriminatory terminology. It, it makes it sound like we're doing, doing something that we're discriminating against people. And I don't like that terminology. I don't like the idea that we're not in good standing, uh, that terminology. Um, but, Sophia, I would, I would hope that you would hold to your position before. Jennifer, I'd hope that you'd hold your position before. Linda, I think I, I thought I knew what your position was gonna be on this in reference to, um, supporting the, uh, community groups. Uh, this is not just an issue, uh, and again, you know, I'm not prepared to speak on this issue completely tonight. This is not just an issue of, uh, facilities or access to facilities or programs. It's, you know, has to do with the, the meeting plans. And there are people that are not happy with the, uh, the meeting plans that, uh, um, that were given out, I mean, you know, meeting priorities that were given out at the last meeting. And there are people that wanna investigate that further. And that's not gonna happen before the October 15th. You know, I wanna have confidence that the city manager thinks that he can get all of his people in line to change all these policies by October 15th, but it ain't gonna happen. Um, so, um, I, I think I would ask, regardless of what the impact of this is, implications of this are, that this, um, item be delayed until it is more publicly posted and known about, because I think there are more people than the four that spoke at the la- the two that spoke, spoke at the last meeting, unfortunately from the same household. But the other people that were here that would like to be heard on this issue. So I'd, I'd ask that you do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Powellman. Are there any other speakers on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Does the council have any questions or comments? Councilmember Say?
Thank you, Mayor. I, first I wanna thank you so much, recognize this issue there and bring it back for have us, us to discuss about that. Uh, as a new council, uh, council member, I mean, we all agree now, uh, with the information was not fully given of this funding to us. So we support that at that time. But however, that we mentioned about 58 million dollars, but we're not gonna give 50 million, 58 million dollars to our city, am I right? So since we're not gonna give 58 million, we might get a one or two or three million dollar there. But I'm thinking right in front of my head, we just overriding a 2023, 24 million to the resident subsidized water and other needs to, to the resident. And that was actually for universal needs of residents supposed to pay for, but they did not. Now, we are really asking residents to pay more through waters worry and sales tax increase. We're working on that. And if this one approved tonight, then we'll further limit our resident leisure time opportunity, opportunity. I believe staff should explore others such as federal and state funding sources. If possible, this project should be postponed rather than accept the county restriction. I am sad. I'm so sad is when the, uh, Measure A, I wrote it down right here real quick. Um, the resident who paid for the Measure A now essentially selling away their rights to use our own facilities. We already, just like I said, subsidized 24 million for countrywide services such as water, zone force, and the program. When some may say this is the free money used on the park that we need it, do it. But then we sell our residents' rights. I heard the staff had presented enough already. There is a chance we can also get the money from, from federal or state. There's a chance there, but I don't wanna sell my neighbor's But I don't want to sell my neighbors', my friends' rights not using the facility. As we all know right now, our using a facility, our city of Cerrito, many times people have to wait. They have to register year before that. So we are in a tight schedule using our facility. Then again, we sell their rights out to, I hate to say, just Ms. Powellman say, discrimination. No, it's not. The resident pay their tax, the resident pay their share. And we are also going to ask them more. How could I, how could I vote for yesterday by giving it right away? I am so sorry. I just can't. Thank you.
Councilmember Hong, do you have any questions or comments?
I think I missed one question. How about 501(c)(3)A, are those group people would be also affected or not?
I'll defer to Beth Selton to answer the status of our A groups in our existing policy.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Hong. Currently, the registered A groups receive priority in terms of booking in further in advance than non-residents. They also receive complimentary use for a special event at one of the city's facilities, so that would no longer apply at Cerritos Park East. They are also allowed one free use per month for business meetings, so they just wouldn't be able to hold those meetings at Cerritos Park East. And the Liberty Park 2 Annex Building is not typically used in that capacity.
Thank you.
Anything else? Councilmember Hong, anything else?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Palito?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your line of questioning earlier. I just want to make some comments that, to add on to my comments earlier about a missed opportunity, and also ongoing missed opportunities, to connect with some of the questions that the mayor asked about future opportunities for potentially $58 million that's going to be, we'd be eligible for. And that is the realization that it's not just that we're going to have a missed opportunity, but that money that we paid into is going to go to subsidize the renovations of other cities' parks. So it's not just that we're choosing not to avail of money that we've already paid into, but we're basically taking, saying we're okay with all of those tax dollars that came from the residents of Cerritos that are going to go to renovate other parks, not ours. And that's kind of crazy. I think people who elected us are going to say, what are you doing? Why in the world are you taking our tax dollars and using it to improve parks in other jurisdictions, not ours? And I want folks to really reflect on that. Are we ready to face our residents who paid into something for the county, for the greater good, not use it to improve the parks that we love and adore, but allow it to be used for parks that most of us aren't ever going to use? If you feel comfortable facing folks and saying, yeah, that's what we did with your money, then vote the way you're going to vote. But if you're like me, and you feel, I don't think I could face someone and say, hey, Gab, we took your money, we decided to spend it elsewhere and not use it here, because why would we need to use it here, right? We're not listening to the folks who spoke, the resident who spoke about how much Heritage Park is in a bad, in bad shape. I feel the same way. I took my mom out for a nice lunch, and we went to that same shelter and tried to step very carefully. It was like a landmine of a lot of nasty stuff. I've never been back. That's kind of sad. And here, we have the opportunity to avail of $1.9 million. I'm glad that the information that Mayor Yokiyama pointed out about in 1995, previous council saw the wisdom in accepting county money to renovate Cerritos Park East, the Cerritos Park East building. I remember when it was much smaller than it is now. And, oh, have we benefited in terms of how many community groups having events in the expanded, renovated Cerritos Park East building? What is that, 95? 30 years of benefit. 30 years of benefit. And then I was proud to be a part of the council when we accepted another $300,000 for the Liberty Park Annex exterior. I remember that. And I'm glad that we have that available. Right, was it like a State Farm Insurance building? And then we acquired it, and we were able to renovate it, and now we have, what types of programs do we have out of there, city manager?
Primarily, we house our tot lot program there. On occasion, it's also used as a vote center by the county. And then we also have some park maintenance activities in the back part of the building.
So you're saying because we staff had the wisdom to recommend it to us and the council, previous council, said, yeah, let's take that $300,000 and let's improve that property right there. We're helping to support our democratic process, right, our voting center, as well as the youngest of the young in our community, the tot lot program. Going forward. So we did it before, why aren't we going to do it again? And for, I'd say the crown jewel of our park system, Heritage Park. It's so aspirational at the same time as it reflects on our rich history, our heritage, why we call it Heritage Park, right? Built somewhere around the bicentennial. Aren't we coming up next year on the 250th anniversary of this great nation? Wouldn't that be great if we infused $1.9 million into that great gem? That crown jewel of our park system? That a lot of people come to take pictures, their wedding parties, right? Their quinceañeras, their debutante courts, taking pictures, because they love our park and our park system. So, yeah, I want them to keep coming back. Because I think a lot of those young people, young families who start their lives, ideas about moving to Cerrito starts in moments like that. Just like when they go to watch a concert at the Cerritos Center for the Performing Arts. Or they get their kid into a tot lot program, one step closer to having their kid go through the ABC in a high school district. Let's think about the bigger picture, folks. Let's get that money, that $1.9 million, and let's apply each and every cycle, especially the one coming up, the $58 million. And let's wisely invest in our infrastructure, our facilities. Because the folks will keep coming. And it will erode if we choose to abdicate our duty to keep up our facilities, in this case, our parks. Thank you.
Mayor, may I have a question?
Councilmember Hong, you can ask your question.
Yes, I have a question. We're talking about, I think, I appreciate Councilmember Mark's, you know, statement. I really appreciate that. But I have a question is like, how long has the Heritage Park renovation been postponed? I know it's been a long time, isn't it?
The area that's currently closed has been closed for a number of years. Once it was found that there was some issues related to the ability for all people to access it, just for safety purposes, it was closed off. There are portions of the island that are open, more of the passive landscaped areas, but the play equipment in the themed buildings are currently closed. That's been for several years. We've been looking at opportunities for renovating it, talking to contractors about what needs to be done to restore it and have it open and safe for patrons to use. So while those conversations have been happening, we've just been trying to identify the best approach. So, the approach that we've recommended is restoring those buildings to open them up again. And the funding that's identified in this fiscal year's budget was approximately what is sufficient to do those restoration efforts.
And so, what you're saying is Heritage Park funding is not part of, oh, I'm sorry, is it part of Measure A funding? Because we should have that money before, and we just never use it.
We've, so there's money that comes every year through the property tax, the parcel tax. And there's an accumulation in an account, let's call it, that the county holds. But it's designated for Cerritos for us to draw from when we're ready. So we, the money has been building, and we are, we have planned in this fiscal year budget, we have a capital improvement project for the Heritage Park Play Island renovation. So, the timing is now right to draw on that fund if authorized by the council.
I see, thank you. Another question, because this time they were identified, especially about the CPE and Liberty Park and North Park. How about the other parks? Do they have same problem or not?
The two properties that are, we're going to discuss, CPE and the Liberty Park 2, the Annex, those were the properties identified by the county as leading to being out of compliance or not in good standing. So those are the areas that we've targeted. Heritage Park is not currently funded by Measure A funds, but if we do apply and use Measure A funds, then it would have to have the same reservation policy apply.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I say something?
Councilmember Say would like to say something.
Thank you. Actually, I want to make some correction, because the person who use Heritage Park more is me. I go there almost, my kids attending the school there four, five times a week, and I volunteer there. And on the island area, actually, it was not, a long time ago, we're still using it. I remember a few programs, the kids tot lot programs, been using there for show. And I, even if I remember correctly, probably over a year, it probably closed. But after that, I remember my friend had a birthday party there, and then tot lot used a program there. And Mother Me also used some program there too. So I mean, use that facility area. However, I do see they're starting covered up, not using the island area, the doors closed. But this is, should be within the years to open, I mean, before the years to open. For the people had confirmed about the duck and Gooster, the poop. Actually, I did a study too, about the city's residents, 50 people loves it, 50 people hates it. Because, and I had discussed with our city manager quite a few times, remember that. And had to give us some suggestion how we can prevent that. Once again, I said again, 58 million, not every single million come to us, for sure. And there's so many city is asking for the money too. It's sad, the resident didn't know what they vote for. And it's sad that we're not really prepared or resident, understand what they vote for, what they paying for. And I still want to recommend our staff, and I hope my colleague will support me on that. However, I can see already right there, and if it's possible, really, we should, this project should be postponed rather than accept the county restriction. And we should instruct our staff to look for some other funds as much as you can. You just closed it not a long time ago. Look for the fund and make some correction, have the kids enjoying that. Rather than the kids cannot enjoy that, start fighting for their position to be there, to learn the thing they're supposed to learn, then by we give away other city. I hate to say the other city, but our city, we are vote by our residents. We're support our resident needs. And that be it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Say. Do you have any questions or comments, Mayor Pro Tem Linda Johnson?
Mr. Mayor, I have comments, and I will make my comments about the park, and I also segue into other, another issue that may improve our parks, so if you indulge me. So after much consideration, and in light of the additional information provided to us, I believe the improvement of our parks specifically, or especially Heritage Park, outweighs our current reservation and registration policies. I visited Heritage Park. I saw the need for the much-needed improvement. There simply is not enough funding to make the repairs needed. However, we are now in a position to do something tonight. Cerritos residents have made it known that beautifying and maintaining their parks was a priority for their families. They no longer have to wait for these improvements. We can get that influx of money, access that money of Measure A funds. As a Cerritos resident myself, I want to see our parks beautified. This only adds to our property values. When we adopted the final budget, this council approved the CIP project number 23101, which allocates $1 million for the Heritage Park Play Island renovation. And I believe these are dollars specifically for the Boston Village portion of the island. These are the buildings that include the play equipment, including a slide, as well as the wooden fence that circles the perimeter of that village. Once completed, we can expect a newly painted Boston Village. The exterior portion actually is on the north side and visible to the streets and residents. They'll be able to walk out of their homes and see a beautiful building that's painted. We can also expect new play equipment, the new wooden fences, and more importantly, a sense of pride for Heritage Park and for Cerritos residents overall. However, these funds do not include the remainder of the island. The Boston project, Boston Village project alone will cost over $1 million. To renovate the entire island will cost tens of millions of dollars. And we all know, the longer you wait, the more costs will go up. Unfortunately, Cerritos residents do not have the benefit of a sales tax measure that can potentially rehabilitate the entire island at Heritage Park. And let's be real, there is no amount of Measure A funds. There is no amount, or even a possibility of getting state or federal grant dollars that will fully fund the renovation of Heritage Park. Sure, we can do one project a year, and then the next year, we do another project, piece by piece. We get the island fixed up. But then by the time you finish the end of the island, the older projects are already starting to deteriorate. Because it's going to take years, decades. So moving forward, we will seriously need to consider a sales tax measure to fund all future projects at our parks, from Heritage, Liberty Park, and Cerritos Park East. Cerritos is known for its beautiful parks and open spaces, and we should be investing in them. A sales tax measure will not come from our residents. It comes from every consumer, which means people that do not live in Cerritos are helping to bring in revenue to the city, which in turn pays for the beautification and maintenance of our parks. Our youth and families deserve better. Currently, we have an unfunded project list of at least $90 million. Residents want a nice city. They want nice parks. They want nice streets. No amount of grants will give us $90 million. We need to be open-minded of what economic development and what a sales tax measure can do to bring to our city. Therefore, I'd like to accept the terms required to access Measure A funds. And if approved by this council tonight, I'd also like to ask the city manager to direct staff to prioritize the Heritage Park project as soon as possible, hopefully with a six-month deadline with the completion date of March 2026. I am aware of the timeline as being a very tight timeline, but I urge that we really consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Mayor, can I ask one more question?
Councilmember Hong would like to ask a question. Go ahead.
Okay, I think, I think maybe we, I don't know if I'm right or wrong, but I want to make sure if we didn't comply with this, the county's requirement about this Measure A thing. if we didn't comply with this, the county's requirement about this major A thing, how would we know we for sure, we're gonna be, you know, we're gonna be taken away? I think maybe some other city got away with this. So how could they get away and we can't get away with it? Like, you know, we still couldn't provide the privileged reservation for the, for the resident and with a special rate. If some other city can get away with it, why city of Cerritos cannot get away with?
My answer to that is that we received a letter from the county advising us of this issue. They may be doing similar studies of other cities and their practices and maybe contacting those cities separately. I can't speak to that, but you know, we have, we've been placed on notice on this issue. So we had, we have responded with the policy question.
I see. Thank you.
I'll also add that for the other cities, it depends on where they are getting their measure A funds and what facilities they're using it on. So similar to us, we're currently discussing only Cerritos Park East at the facility and Liberty Park Two, the remainder of Liberty Park One, the Olympic Swim Center and the other parks are not affected. So any uniform access or uniform fee structure is not applicable to those places. And that would remain. And moving forward, the city will be cognizant of that. And in terms of applying for funding, that will be something that we'll consider before any funding requests are made to ensure that, like you said, there is still the ability to maintain that local control or priority access.
Thank you.
Thank you. And city manager, thank you for reminding us that we did, the city of Cerritos did receive letters from the Los Angeles County Regional Park and Open Space District. We received two letters from them, at least two letters from them. And those two letters were attached as exhibits to the September 8, 2025 City Council Agenda Item, City Council Agenda Report, which makes it clear to the council why we have to address this issue of keeping in good standing regarding measure A, so our city can continue to receive millions and millions of dollars, of eligible dollars in measure A funding that our residents every year are paying into because of the parcel tax. So our residents every year are going to be paying this parcel tax year after year after year, correct, city manager?
For as long as the measure A tax is in effect, yes, it's an, it's an ongoing annual revenue source.
So for the time being, it's ongoing annual parcel tax. Every year, our residents are paying taxpayer dollars for this parcel tax. And the question is, are our residents going to get their rightful fair share of measure A funds? And I want to get, I want our residents, our 48,000 residents who want a safe, beautiful city with maintained infrastructure and maintained parks with maintained streets, sidewalks, curbs, parks, trees. I want to do everything we can to give that to our residents, our 48,000 residents who want to come home every, every day, every night to a beautiful city. And I don't want to give up, just give back to the county and really just give to the other, other cities of Los Angeles County, our Cerritos residents taxpayer dollars, which, which we have an actual hard, hard amount today that's eligible to us that if we are not in good standing, it's going to go back into the pool of $1,858,819. And that's just today. And you've already confirmed, Annie and Robert, and this agenda report confirms that every year, there's going to be more parcel tax paid by our residents. And then there's going to be eligible measure A funds that cities in good standing can apply for. And if we're a city in good standing, we could potentially get millions and millions and millions of dollars for our parks and our open spaces. And the reason why this is compounded, why this is magnified is because like we all discussed and understood during the budget approval process culminating in the five of us approving our budget in June is we are budget constrained. Our city is budget constrained and we have to be fiscally responsible for the benefit and welfare of all 48,000 residents. We cannot prioritize the needs of the few over the needs of the many. We cannot prioritize the needs of the few over the needs of the 48,000 residents of Cerritos and their friends and family who enjoy the city of Cerritos, including our parks and our open spaces. And we are budget constrained. And we have to make these fiscally responsible decisions that, that take into account all of our residents. Because our residents told us in 2020, we don't want a sales tax measure, 2020, right? We don't want a sales tax measure. So city council figure it out on how to keep Cerritos, Cerritos without a sales tax measure. And our residents wanted us to keep Cerritos safe. They want us to keep Cerritos safe. They want us to take care of our infrastructure, our trees, our streets, our sidewalks, our parks. They want us to maintain our programs and services without the sales tax measure that the residents voted down. So we have to do what the residents told us to do. Maintain all of those things, including our parks, without the sales tax measure. So that's what this city council has been working to do since March, when we started working together and we've been making decisions based on the fact that we're budget constrained. And our residents understand, our residents asked us to figure out the finances of our city without the benefits of a sales tax measure. And they understand that that means there's going to be some programs and services that are going to be cut. That's why, for example, we're closing the library one day a week. So we can't continue with the status quo. Our residents did not give us the $11 million plus a year that would have come with the sales tax measure back in 2020. And that's why we would have received well over $55 million in additional sales tax revenue if measure A had funded. We don't have that 55 million. We're budget constrained. We have a budget deficit of $407,000 on the budget reapproved in June. And even that budget deficit of $407,000, this council had to work together and make, have a robust conversation and be respectful of each other and come to a compromise to unanimously approve a budget that had a $407,000 budget deficit. That's why it's, 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 I, it's hard for me to wrap my head, my, my head around the fact that we want to give up one, over 100, 1.8 million dollars. We want to give up $1,858,819. We want to just give that up when this city council worked so hard together, respectfully, collegially to come to a compromise and unanimously approve a budget with a $407,000 budget deficit. And that hurt, that hurt to have that budget deficit, but we didn't want to keep cutting. We didn't want to keep cutting. And then now we're looking at losing $1,858,819 that can make our parks better. And, and you know, I, I know that we can always continue to learn and get more, get more information about our city. But I do want to point out that the city council in June approved our budget. We approved the capital improvement program. And the capital improvement program included the Heritage Park Play Island renovation. This project will provide for the design and construction of renovated play areas, pathways and associated improvements at the Heritage Park Play Island. The island was last renovated in the late 1990s and reopened in 2002. Measure A gives us a million dollars in this capital improvement program to accomplish this project. And it says in black and white, when we received this proposed budget and this council considered this proposed budget and approved this proposed budget with all of the robust conversation we had and discussions where we finally got to a $407,000 budget deficit that we approved together unanimously. This capital improvement program of the Heritage Park Play Island renovation expressly said implement, implementing, implementation of this project is contingent upon the approval of funding by the Los Angeles County Regional Park and Open Space District. So that's what's happening here today. This council direction to do what we need to do to get this funding from the Los Angeles County Regional Park and Open Space District, which is also RPUSD as referred to in our agenda report. A million dollars, a million dollars that we approved for the 25, 26 fiscal year, we're already a quarter of the way through the fiscal year. And we haven't spent a dollar of this on Heritage Park. And I'm hoping that this council approves item, approves recommendation to be so that you city manager can get going on project number 23101, this million dollar project for the Heritage Park Play Island renovation. The dollar amount is $1,858,819 pursuant to page two of the September H, September 8 Agenda Report. What is this other $858,819 going to be used for?
So the current fiscal year budget identifies a $1 million amount. We've recently had discussions with prospective contractors to do restoration work. It estimates may come out higher than a million. So when we come back to, if, if there's a change in policy approved and we're eligible for measure A funds, we will be coming back with a request to award a contract. And we'll have more information about the exact dollar amount. So it may actually be more than a million. It may be closer to maybe 1.5 depending. But given that we have a 1.8 plus or minus potential funding source, that should provide sufficient funding for all the work needed.
So did, did you, are you talking about any specific parks?
So I was referring specifically to the Heritage Park Island restoration.
So spending more than a million dollars?
Potentially, just given more recent estimates since the time that the budget was originally prepared. There, there may be additional costs needed.
Okay, so we can spend over, we can, as a council, consider spending more of the measure A funds than a million dollars on our parks, including Heritage Park?
Yes, potentially, yes.
Do we have enough funding for parks like Frontier Park where we're, did we, are we back with the structure that was torn down? Was that replaced?
It has not yet been replaced. We have begun the process to order the, the parts needed and then schedule installation. That is currently funded also in the budget, but through a separate funding source.
Okay. Can we identify park, our, our city park needs, fina, improvement needs and renovation needs in this additional $858,819 sooner than later?
There are other projects in the CIP that are currently unfunded. Off the top of my head, I believe the western half of Gridley Park Playground is due for replacement. That is currently listed but unfunded. I believe Satellite Park was also listed as an unfunded project. So I don't, I don't know though, if those, that work meets all of the measure A guidelines. So we'd have to confirm, but there are other park projects that could be utilized with measure A funds.
Okay. So I'm hoping that the city of Cerritos can work together, continue work together with Los Angeles County, Los Angeles County Parks and Recreation, and work together with the Los Angeles County Regional Park and Open Space District to provide maintained and improved and renovated parks in, in the city of Cerritos, one of the 88 cities of Los Angeles County. And, and I, I believe that our residents, our 48,000 residents of Cerritos collectively want maintained, safe, beautiful parks. And that's why I am supportive, 100% supportive of being in compliance with the measure A funding requirements. Do we have a motion?
Before we make a motion, may I ask a final question?
Councilmember Hong has a question. Go ahead.
Sorry. I just want to make sure, for sure, you're trying to say, because this is very important for me to make my decision. You say for measure A, we are annually get 1.8 something, almost 1.9 million every year. Is that correct?
No, no, the 1.8, let's call it 1.8, that's been accumulated is over multiple years. So it varies from year to year because it's based on property tax revenues. Recent years, we've received on an annual basis approximately 240,000 of, of new monies that get added to that account, let's call it. And then an additional roughly 50,000, mid 50 to 60,000 of monies that are specifically earmarked for maintenance of prior projects. So 240,000 a year that can be applied toward new projects and then 50, 55, 60,000 of maintenance money. It's typical for cities to wait until money accumulates in that account for over multiple years and then draw down from that account and apply it toward a major project. It's hard to do, you know, any significant project for 240,000. But if you wait a few years, you get, you know, a million dollars plus, then you can do something significant.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Hong. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion to direct staff to change the city's reservation and class policies at Cerritos Park East and Liberty Park Two effective October 15, 2025 to comply with the measure A agreement. with the measure eight agreement requirements.
Second. Okay, so Mayor Pro Tem Johnson made the motion. Council member Palito seconded it and it is, their motion is item, it's their, their motion is number two B in the agenda report under recommendation, correct? Okay. Let's vote.
The motion passes on a vote of three to two.
Okay. Item seven consent calendar.
Move to approve consent calendar.
Haven't had a chance to talk yet. I'd like to make a substitute motion to approve the consent calendar except for item seven
Second.
Okay, item seven C. Do I have any questions from the council about item seven C? Council member Say, do you have any questions? Council member Hong, any questions about item seven C?
Uh, no, thank you, mayor.
Council member Palito?
No questions, sir.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, any questions about?
None, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to open up item seven C for public comment. Do I have any speakers for item seven C?
David Powellman. During the August 28 meeting, you all addressed each other about the impact a change from Thursdays to Mondays would have on you. You assume that all, uh, we assume that all the city employees would be ready as a term of their employment to make themselves available if required on Mondays. But did you get assurance that the city attorney was available on Monday? I am aware that she has other professional commitments. I certainly do not think that at least two of you would like to change city attorneys again. What has made this agenda item time sensitive is its effect on the yearly calendar that, um, that is delivered to residents. Recently you decided, um, that the monthly Cerritos news would not be mailed to the residents. A misinterpreted memo was distributed, which some believed indicated that some of the dates listed on the back of the Cerritos news would not appear on the, in the, on the yearly calendar. But in fact, I believe it was indicated to indicate that whereas previously events like school board meetings, community group meetings, and similar items would no longer appear on the digital online replacement for the Cerritos news. I do not believe that you are hearing from all the residents. I believe you hear from those residents who clearly understand how to get some of this information. In talking to a member of the communications division staff, I relayed how difficult it is for me to share information with members of my tract on the several issues that have recently affected our area. Oh, it's easy to log into ABC Unified School District via the taskbar, but then how do you get further? This is not necessarily a fall to the school district, it's a shortfall of technology awareness. In my own house, it's frustration about the ability to solicit interest in organizations. When the date, location, and time of the monthly meeting, as well as the contact email or phone number was printed in the news, it was possible for someone with some interest in the Cerritos La Palma Association, American Association of University Women to find out more. And who is likely to be, be logged, logged into the library website to found out, find out the date of the next book sale? During the service club, um, presentation tonight, let, let's hear how the, it would be approved, approved for growth for some of these groups, um, with, with they had better communication or better publicity. Where does the importance of posting the date of the next rabies clinic fall when compared to meetings of the Bellflower Unified School District? So, uh, I believe, um, yeah, that's, that's what I had to say. Thank you. Again, I, I think it's important for us to, to support organizations and this is not just a minority of the residents. You know, one, one other thing, let me tack on here is that you see, there's a lot of people that are very religious in the community and I think many of the organizations are religious, uh, based. So therefore you don't have a problem with getting into the churches, et cetera. But those groups who are not really religious may ha, may have to use those city facilities and they need to have the publicity as well as the access to those facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powellman. Do I have any other questions or comments from the city council? Council member Say? Council member Hong? Council member Palito? Mayor Pro Tem Johnson? I make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
The motion passes five to zero.
There are no public hearings scheduled for tonight's meeting. City attorney, city clerk, after we concluded the special meeting, um, agenda item nine A, um, um, I will now announce that we will now recess the special meeting and reconven, reconvene the regular meeting. Is there anything more I need to do in that regard? Next on the item is, next on the agenda is item 10, city manager, do we have any legislative items?
Uh, no, mayor, no items under 10A or 10B this evening.
The next item is 11A. Does the city manager have a report?
Uh, thank you, mayor. I do not have any, uh, reports this evening.
City council communications. I'll start with council member Say.
Thank you, mayor. Well, I have been swamped visiting residents' home, listen to their concern, sharing updates about our city and attending the many events that city provides. Tonight, after being elected six months, I would like to first thank our mayor for providing me with such a thoroughly background on the city. I also want to take opportunity to give special thanks to our city manager, Mr. Lopez, for you assisting me with tasks requested by the resident and the staff. Um, special thanks to Ryan Carey, I think he's left already probably, and deputy city manager Pam Lee, our district attorney, uh, always be available for me once a question arise. Um, Cynthia Nava, our city clerk, HR director Drew Sernader, and our manager Kathy Matsumoto, and our administrative staff Christina and Tricia. And I also want to say thank you to the few people if I left your name out, but I want to say thank you to all our city staff. Uh, all of you made my work much easier. I genuinely appreciate your support. Here's some of the specific assignment and event attend. September 11, I volunteer at the senior center as, um, serving the meal to the senior citizen. It was really exciting, you know, talk to the people and then see, um, the meal they were provided to them. They also provide two free meals for them to take home once they sign out the, the meal services. On September 20, I attended Cerritos Elementary School Annual Pancake Fund Race. I cannot miss that. There's always every year I want to attend that. Kaiser flu bleeds with our mayor. You know, he was very supportive, patiently visiting multiple, multiple department at the clinic and he also got a flu shots. And you are go-go mayor. You're really attending everywhere, I see that. Um, Formosa Senior Association 31st Anniversary, our mayor also stay until the end. Mr. Shu, the former chair from this, uh, Formosa, he called me afterward, he say, I like you, mayor. He say, thank you for supporting local events and more than I, I mean, more than I do, I, I could. I, I mean, I really salute it to you, staying there and without saying anything, he say, I am going to stay here. That's what he told me. Um, I also attended CCPA performance event on September 20. On September 23rd, I went to, um, chubby cattle ribbon cutting and same evening attending Lakewood Celebrate. I have to work, so I went very late to, to that event. Uh, September, September 24th, I attended Bisfat Pax, 11th Annual Freshman Policemaker Reception with my economic commissioner, commissioner, Mr. Kenneth Chen, Kenneth Jiang. I was warmly welcomed and had opportunity to meet many business leaders. I also reconnected with my old friends, including the senator and other elected official who congratulate me on being elected to the Cerritos City Council. My commissioner, Mr. Jiang, was very pleased to meet everyone and share their thoughts with me afterwards. That'll be my report. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, council member Say. Council member Hong?
Thank you. I'm going to make my, uh, report a little bit shorter. Uh, briefly, I just want to say on September 20th, I also, uh, present a proclamation to, uh, Formosa Senior Association, uh, for their 31st anniversary and then also, uh, to celebrate the, uh, Autumn Festival that, you know, the Chinese traditional Autumn Festival. And they're very happy and I also tell them that, oh, our council are very busy, our mayor are very busy, we all running around and they will show up later on and which they did, um, they're very appreciative of that. They feel very, um, uh, they are very, um, happy with our council, that all the support to them. And also, uh, right after that, I have to leave early because I have to go to the Sheraton, uh, to present, uh, meritorious, uh, marine, um, on behalf of the first CEB, uh, for their proclamation. And also on the, uh, September 23rd, where I joined the chubby cattle ribbon cutting and it was a great experience and I'm so happy we have such a great, uh, Japanese restaurant in Cerritos, finally, yes. And we all enjoyed that, uh, the food is wonderful and I fully recommend it, uh, all the residents, when you have the time, go, um, try it and try to dining and spend, you know, your, all your, you know, increase our sales revenue for our city because I think our, our city is trying very hard to get all the good restaurants and we want to have a good, um, you know, CCPA revenue. We all want to try very hard together to, in order to generate more sales revenue for the city. So this is very important. But, um, on that, um, I want to especially, uh, thanks to, um, Annie, uh, for, um, the director of community and, um, the cultural service. On September 24th, it was a great evening, uh, in the Cerritos Library Skyline Room. I wasn't planning to go, but I was like, you know, I was in the office, so I hop over because I heard, um, uh, the people gonna be there as the, um, the, the owner, uh, from Beatrice Porter of the famous Porto's Bakery and Cafe Restaurant. And she came over to our, uh, Skyline Room and gave us a very, um, fantastic, uh, fantastic, uh, history from the family, uh, about the family run business, how they become so successful. And, uh, she also give us like 10 minutes, um, a Q and A timing, which is not enough because everybody's asking and a lot of question and, um, she was giving like a, more than an hour non-stop speech and it was really very, uh, inspiring. And then, um, she also give very, um, solid, uh, recommendation. People asking like, okay, I want to be successful, if I want to open a bakery just like you, how shall I start it? And she's very down to the earth. She told people, you have to start it small. If you have to start it from your kitchen, start it from your kitchen because don't try to spend too much overhead to start with. And the secondly, I was very impressed that she, we probably don't know about this, um, she, they donated all the leftover bakeries to the charity, the people, you know? So every day they donate all whatever leftover and they have a lot of leftover because they want to make the store look good even until the end of the day. So for that, uh, really appreciate that they, they will give it back to the community. And I guess that's why they be so successful because I believe, always believe giving is very important and especially giving back to the community is also, uh, one of my passion. That's very important. Anyway, this is the most inspiring, inspiring, um, Cerritos Library speakers for the Hispanic Heritage, um, month. And I'm sure I also, uh, I, I sure wish we can, um, get the protos in Cerritos as well in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Hong. Council member Palito?
I don't have any report tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, council man, oh, Mayor Pro Tem Linda Johnson.
Thank you. September 9, I attended the first meeting of the Economic Development Commission and congratulations to my appointee Al Reyes for being appointed and voted in as the chair. On September 11, also known as Patriot Day, I joined in with my council colleagues and city staff in a moment of silence at our Public Safety Memorial to remember those that lost their lives on that horrific day. On September 17, I attended the installation of the Honorable Ray Jackson, council member of Hermosa Beach as the new president of Independent Cities Association. September 23rd, I attended the ribbon cutting of chubby cattle. Later that evening, I also represented, represented the city at Lakewood Celebrates. I've also had a last, uh, I've also had a busy last two weeks at the Cerritos Center for the Performing Arts. I attended the following shows, Kansas, KT Tunstall, Vertical Horizon, and Toad the Wet Sprocket, Revisiting Creedence, Direct from Sweden, ABBA, the 70's Soul Jam. I especially like the Stylistics. I love the 90's tour. Now that was a party and everyone in the house was up on their feet dancing. And so each one of these shows were amazing and well-attended. So every live show at the CCPA is a great experience. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, the number one city council member supporter of the CCPA. Ever since she got elected in 2022.
The meeting I just went, that's what they say, CCPA queen.
Thank you.
Okay, so Name the Cow Contest, um, we have, I have, uh, community event announcements. Name the Cow Contest, the city of Cerritos is holding a Name the Cow Contest to name the cow sculpture that will be part of the Melking Time, a tribute to Dairy Valley artwork. Entries can be submitted online at ceridos.gov/cow. And then the Cerritos Senior Center at Pat Nixon Park is holding a Health and Wellness Fair on Friday, October 3. The fair opens at 8:30 AM for Cerritos residents and at 9:00 AM for the general public. For information, please visit ceridos.gov. So tonight, um, I'm, I'm thankful and pleased that the council, the city council, uh, took the steps for us to be in good standing and be eligible for measure eight funding. Okay, so you have heard from the council, city manager. Okay, so you have heard from the council, City Manager, we have a budget that we approved in June, we have a capital improvement program that includes the Heritage Island Project. Please, that, that, that project has been long overdue, that area's been taped off and roped off for too long. The park has not been renovated since the 1990s. Okay, so Robert, Alvin, Chris, I need you guys, the council has given you the direction tonight to move forward with Measure A funding, move forward with that capital improvement project. I want this council to not, I don't, I want the residents of Cerritos to see that million dollars, get, get, to fund that Heritage Island Capital Improvement Project as soon as possible. I heard Mayor Protem Johnson say by March of 2026. Okay, so I respect that, be happy that she said that. I would have said something earlier. Okay, but I'm not going to go against her. I'm not going to, I'm not going to change it. She already put it out there, but I, I would have said something earlier.
Mr. Mayor, can I just add on to that?
Please.
It would be perfect so that we could help celebrate the 250th anniversary of the United States of America, right there at our gem, the Heritage Park. So I agree that the sooner the better in 2026. Thank you.
Just a quick, a quick story is in 2024, when California Attorney General Rob Monta was going to meet with former Mayor Mark Palito and with Councilmember Frank Yokuyama in Cerritos, we met at Heritage Park in the rain.
I realize the tight timeline that I requested, but I also want to be mindful that we do it safely. We have kids play equipment.
See, now, now you're giving, now you're fudging around with the March 26.
I know, I just want to make sure it's done safely.
Mayor, members of the city council, I hear loud and clearly the urgency and expressed, and we will do our best to work expeditiously. As soon as we have more information, we'll provide updates on a realistic timeline. We'd be happy to share that.
Expeditiously is what, what we want you to do, and I can see Alvin's brain working right now on everything that he needs to do to get it done by March of 2026. Okay, the thing, sorry, I need to, I need to bring up something because I'm proud of so many people. I'm proud of our Neighborhood Watch, I'm proud of our VOPS, I'm proud of Southwest Patrol, I'm proud of all of you working together with Captain Strong. In, in 2024, residents were coming into this chamber displeased with residential burglaries, and they were complaining about residential burglaries. And in 20, in January of 2025, we had, in January 2025, we had 28 residential burglaries. And in February, we had 19 residential burglaries. And this city council, we, we, we started working together in March. And in March of 2025, there was 12 residential burglaries. April 7, May 8, June 7, July 6, and I'm happy to see the August number is 6. We, year-to-date, compared to 2024, we have over 30% reduction in residential burglaries. So thank you to everybody working together to address a priority of our residents, which is to have a safe city and to suppress residential burglaries. What, what have you been doing, what have you been prioritizing and focusing on as an important part of safety in our city, Captain Strong, to suppress residential burglaries to this extent with this new council where we are over 30% below year-to-date what we were with residential burglary, residential burglaries last year?
Thank you for the question, Honorable Mayor. Lots of this credit goes to you guys and the deputies. That's what's made the difference, the, the support from council as well as the deputies' hard work on the ground. They've been patrolling those areas that are hit hardest, they've been working with the crime analysts to identify the areas that the burglars have been hitting, and they've been focusing their time there. We've shifted the security patrol to those specific locations as well. We've worked with Major Crimes Bureau, we've switched some of our policies so that we can respond faster. We've, we've made audible burglar arms a priority call, which reduced the response to them by 50%, so from 14 minutes to 7 minutes. We, the city supplied $50,000 for additional patrols, so we, we included that in there, and we just haven't let off the brakes, but we still have six, and that's six too many. So we're going to keep working.
We will now, oh, next on the item is, next on the agenda is item 12. City Attorney, will you please announce the closed-session item?
Yes, we will be recessing into closed session to discuss items 12A through D in closed session.
We will now adjourn the regular and special meeting, and the council will recess to closed session. Thank you to everybody.